Good morning, everybody. This is the Wednesday morning, June 30th, 2021 session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good morning. Please call the roll.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty.
Here.
Max.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference. And the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, E-Gov, PDX, www-portlandoregon.gov/video, and Channel 30, the city's YouTube. Oh, I already read that. The public can also provide written testimony to the council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@PortlandOregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distance. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you, as always, for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding that we manage through these interesting circumstances to conduct the city's business. We'll now hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good morning. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at PortlandOregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. And please disclose if you are a lobbyist, and if you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Thank you. Colleagues, it is that time again, believe it or not, where we elect a new council president. Commissioner Hardisty has served in that capacity and will continue to serve in that capacity through this evening. In fact, she will be presiding over this afternoon's council session. I have a absence filed for this afternoon. Commissioner Ryan is next in line to serve as council president effective July 1st through December 31st, 2021. Before I call for a motion, I want to thank my colleague Commissioner Hardisty, who has served as our council president for the last six months. Arguably, this last six months has been one of the most challenging in the history of the city. My time has been occupied with dealing with multiple crises. There have been times when I've had to call on Commissioner Hardisty to preside over the council. Frankly, more often than I have on prior occasions during my first four years as mayor. Commissioner Hardisty, you have stepped up even at a moment's notice from time to time. You've done an exceptional job. I really want to thank you for the great work you did as council president. For the public's benefit, you should know, council president, it sounds really awesome. Don't get paid any extra for it. It just is. And frankly, it's one more administrative headache on top of the really challenging job that people already have just being a city commissioner. So thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for your outstanding service. I will now entertain a motion to move to have Commissioner Ryan be the next president of the council effective July 1st, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Hardisty moves. Can I get a second, please?
Okay.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. And with that, Kealan, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I want to start off also by echoing what the mayor said. Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for your service as council president these last six months. As the mayor said, it's been quite a ride, and especially for the new commissioners, including myself. I've been here nine months or more, and we're all learning our roles and our assignments in the council process. And it was just a blessing to have you mentor and lead us, especially in those moments when the mayor had to suddenly step away. You just would jump right in, and it was seamless. So I look forward to filling in and leading in the same manner whenever I'm called upon to do so in the mayor's absence. So thank you, colleagues. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Let me stop by saying thank you, Mayor. I think those are the nicest things you've said to me over the last six months. I want to also thank former Commissioner Yu Daly, who, the day she showed up, had to be council president. And you know, this job is hard enough than showing up as council president on day one. And as the senior member of the council, I was privileged to be able to play that role while my new colleagues kind of figured out who was on first. And you know, all of us are required to do things that wasn't quite in the job description when we signed up for this work. But I have to tell you, I've enjoyed the opportunity to lead and follow with this council. And being part of the most diverse council in the history of the city of Portland is an honor for me. And each of you are here because there were people in the city of Portland who thought you were the right people at the right time. And so we share a great responsibility and also a great honor to be able to serve the people in the city of Portland. So I don't take that lightly, and I know none of you do either. And so I'm very happy to vote aye. And Commissioner Ryan, I am here for you. When you get that midnight phone call and people are like, what the heck, I'm here for you. So I vote aye.
Max.
I'd like to thank Commissioners Hardisty and Ryan for their service to the city and this council. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Hardisty for her leadership and support during this time. And I've learned a lot watching both the mayor and Commissioner Hardisty in my first days about how to, how, you know, to preside over a meeting. So it's helping to quell my own anxiety when that time comes. So thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. And then also to Commissioner Ryan, welcome to this role, and we're here to support you. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Commissioner Ryan, it's a lot more fun than everybody just made it sound. So I didn't want them to talk you out of the job. You'll do great. All of us are here to help. Obviously, presiding can be a group effort from time to time. You'll do an outstanding job. And again, thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for the service you're going to provide starting tomorrow. And again, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for just your all-around awesomeness as the presiding council president. Thank you. I vote aye. And the motion carries. And thank you all for that. With that, Kealan, we'll go right into communications, please. First individual item 505. It may be that they want to testify together. There's a number of people who look like they signed up together, but I'll leave that to you and to them.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. 505, request of Rod Sutch to address council regarding the need for human rights-based city policies.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Wheeler. I would like to request a change in the order of speakers. We would like, we're all talking on the same topic, and we would like Olivia Catby-Smith to go first, followed by Hannah Alsgal and Ramsey Faruki. And after Ramsey, Cody Urban, and then I would like to speak last.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Kealan, did you get that order?
I did. And should I just go ahead and read all of the communication titles?
Why didn't you do that? And they'll jump in. And again, it's three minutes each, name for the record.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'll read them. 506, request of Cody Urban to address council regarding the need for human rights-based city policies. 507, request of Olivia Catby-Smith to address council regarding the need for human rights-based city policies. 508, request of Ramsey Faruki to address council regarding the human rights violations that contractors like G4S commit in occupied territories. And 509, request of Hannah Alsgal to address council regarding boycott, divest, sanction petition. Okay.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Okay. Thank you so much to the council for hearing us today. My name is Olivia Catby-Smith, and I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. Myself and for other Portlanders signed up for public comment today to call to your attention issues of human rights that concern the city of Portland. As you may know, there was an escalation of horrific violence by the occupying Israeli army in Palestine in May. Thousands of Palestinians continue to be forcibly displaced, while hundreds were murdered with bombs paid for by US tax dollars. You may or may not know Israel is the largest recipient of US military funding, with nearly $4 billion a year of our tax dollars going to the Israeli military. This led to many concerned Portlanders marching in the streets and examining the complicity of our own city and our own local resources in this Israeli state violence. Over 1,700 Portland residents, many who noted that they are part of the Muslim or Jewish communities here in Portland, signed a petition to you all that contains three measures to end our city's complicity in violating Palestinian human rights. I emailed that petition and the signatories to all of your offices a few days ago, so you should have that in your inboxes. Similar to the way which many local governments, including our own in Portland, took action to end complicity in South African apartheid, we have several ways for US city commissioners to take action to enact our progressive values and end our city's complicity in Israeli apartheid. So the request is for councils to adopt, number one, a pledge to not renew the city's contract with G4S at the end of the current five-year contract. Number two, a resolution prohibiting Portland police trainings with any foreign military, police, or private company, including in Israel. And number three, a socially responsible procurement policy which screens potential contractors for human rights violations and renders companies which have a record of human rights violations ineligible for contracting with the city. Each of these measures already have precedent in other US cities, so Portland would not be the first to adopt any of these measures. And the speakers that follow me will explain each of these points in more detail. And yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to address you today. Thanks.
Next up, we have Hannah Alsgal.
Thank you for hearing from us today on this matter. My name is Hannah Alsgal. I'm a displaced Palestinian and a member of Hriya Collective. I'm a part of the 1,600 Portlanders that are asking the city to reflect on their statements of anti-racism and lauded progressive values in order to adopt the three demands in our campaign. In those is a proposed resolution prohibiting Portland police training with any foreign military, police, or private company, including in Israel. Since the state sanctioned murder of Michael Brown in Ferguson, Missouri, the ongoing struggle against policing and hypermilitarization was made aware to many for the first time as militarized Ferguson police forces brutalized and tear-gassed community protests against the extrajudicial killing. Police forces in the US are occupying forces of Black and Brown communities as their main responsibilities are state repression and harassing and violating members of the communities they occupy. Militarized training in Israel with the occupation forces aid in this overpolicing by running trainings in racial profiling and mass surveillance, not to mention attempts to justify apartheid and fascistic measures against Palestinian popular resistance, which is wrongly characterized as terrorism. Former Portland Police Chief Danielle Outlaw accepted an all-expense-paid trip to Israel to attend one of these trainings, but she later regretted it, saying she realized something was wrong when she saw the apartheid wall. That wall separates Palestinians from their schools, jobs, hospitals, and farms, and is a daily humiliating method to deny their freedom of movement. Her trip never should have happened, and normal police trainings in Israel should be allowed. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Ramsey Faruki.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you sound good.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Ramsey Faruki. I'm the director of the Center for Study and Preservation of Palestine. Council members, I'm here today to ask you to consider and care that your decisions locally have massive implications elsewhere. Here to ask you to consider and care that your decision to continue our financial relationship with G4S directly results in violence and enforcement of racist apartheid system against Palestinians and occupied Palestine. G4S is not just any security contract. They have a history of extensive complicity in racist policing, human rights abuses in prisons, and developing of tactics for enforcement of internationally illegal military belligerents. Up until just 2016, G4S was contracted with the Israeli Prison Service, an entity that disproportionately imprisons Palestinians, subjects them to documented torture, and is renowned for the detainment of children. Today, G4S holds 50% stake in publicity. The company contracted to build and operate Israeli Occupation State's National Police Academy, and G4S is therefore responsible for 40% of the training. This means that G4S actively trains and financially benefits from occupation security forces that enforce ethnic cleansing of indigenous Palestinians in the legally annexed East Jerusalem. They participate in forced evictions of families, demolition of homes, and extrajudicial executions. G4S trains individuals racially profile, arrest, and detain Palestinian adults and children that are held without charge or trial often. G4S trains individuals, allowing inflammatory racist marches through Palestinian neighborhoods chanting "Death to Arabs", and "The second exile is coming", while at the same time preventing Palestinians from accessing their homes and places of work. G4S trains the people who attack Palestinian worshippers, the holiest site for Muslims in Jerusalem, the second holiest site in all of Islam, teargassing them inside of their very Aqsa Mosque, while on the other hand, video documentation of hand escorting and protecting instigators who come to disrupt their prayers daily. Council members, you cannot claim that you are unaware. The world has become aware. You only can choose to care or not to care. You can choose to stand against human rights abuses or support them for the convenience of continuing contracts. The Palestinian people and I ask you to stand on the correct side of history while you still can. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Cody Urban.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you sound good, Cody. Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Cody Urban. I'm speaking on behalf of the International League of People's Struggle, which is an alliance of multiple organizations that has endorsed the demands of this petition. I stand alongside all of my colleagues who have spoken before me, making the point that the city of Portland not only can, but should, take an active stance on the issue of Palestinian human rights and Israeli war crimes. I also believe that this issue extends beyond Palestine, as a genuine socially responsible procurement policy would protect the city from contracting a business with any involvement in human rights abuses overall. Whether it is complicity in family separation at the US-Mexico border, theft and non-consensual appropriation of lands under indigenous sovereignty, or productions of weapons used in war crimes overseas, businesses with a track record of human rights abuses do not reflect the values of the majority of Portlanders. Portland is a city that often expresses public pride in embracing progressive values. This is an opportunity for Portland to put those values into action. The most recent draft of procurement documents of the city includes questions related to labor rights and environmental protections. And this is a positive addition. But how can we rest assured that companies passing even these standards for their operations within the city of Portland are not involved either directly or through subsidiaries in abuses overseas? Just last month, Cambridge, Massachusetts, the city that I lived in for the first two years of my life, resolved to end all contracts with businesses profiting from Israeli state violence. I want to see the city that I currently live in now follow suit. The facts and figures shared by my colleagues before me speak for themselves. We must not allow Portland to be complicit in human rights abuses, whether they are happening under our noses or not. In 2017, the city council voted to end investment in corporate securities after a broad coalition of organizations spoke out against their city's funds being invested in companies like Caterpillar, Wells Fargo, Hewlett-Packard, and others for these companies' roles in enabling forced home demolitions, private prisons, and other human rights abuses. This is a legacy that you can help maintain by making the decision to implement a socially responsible procurement policy that includes language protecting international human rights. Thank you for your time this morning.
And finally, we have Rod Sutch.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wheeler and city commissioners, for listening to our testimony this morning. I just want to encourage you to reflect on the importance of your actions and statements. You have the unique opportunity to set an example, not only for Portland, but also for the rest of the country and indeed the rest of the world. Portland is not an island entire to itself. By calling ourselves a sanctuary city, for example, we sent a message to the Trump administration and to the entire world that we oppose the harsh and racist treatment of migrants and asylum seekers. Members of this council have pointed out that a city budget is also a moral document reflecting our values as a city. The same is true for how the city invests its money and who it contracts with. Some people have dismissed the issue of Palestinian rights as a foreign policy issue or an international issue. But in the past, this council has taken stands on apartheid South Africa and the military dictatorship in Myanmar. These are fundamentally human rights issues. And if we fail to recognize the universality of human rights, we undermine the very concept. Your voice makes a difference. During the boycott, divestment, and sanctions campaign against apartheid South Africa, hundreds of city councils in the United States divested from that country. You can do the same today for the rights of the Palestinian people who live under apartheid according to Human Rights Watch and Israel's own two leading human rights organizations, Betsalem and Yeshdim. I would also like to point out that the city's procurement office recently failed an audit because it had not provided sufficient guidelines or milestones for awarding contracts to local minority-owned businesses. The head of the procurement office resigned in the wake of this failed audit. As the city's procurement process undergoes reevaluation, ask yourself this: Who is more likely to abide by human rights criteria? A giant multinational corporation driven by the profit motive, often with a proven track record of human rights abuses? Or a local minority-owned business whose owners and workers have themselves been the victims of human rights abuses? Thank you for listening, and we hope that we can have more in-depth discussions with you on these issues.
All right. Thank you all for your testimony. We appreciate it. And Kealan, does that complete the public testimony for today?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, good. Thank you, everybody, for coming in to council and providing some information and context. We appreciate it. Next item is the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda, Kealan?
We've received no requests.
Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Max.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item, please. Item number 510.
Approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission FY 2021-22 fund budget.
Commissioner Rubio, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. The agenda item before us is to approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission fiscal year 2021 to 22 fund budget. The Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission is a longstanding intergovernmental partnership among Gresham, Fairview, Troutdale, Wood Village, Multnomah County, and the city of Portland. The city's required portion, an allocation from the general fund for the MHCRC operations budget, is $348,545. And for clarity, this amount is already included in the city's recently approved annual budget in special appropriations. And this goes to the administration and dispersment of about $12.6 million annually in community technology-related benefits throughout the city and county derived by cable franchise agreements. So I'm pleased to introduce three speakers to briefly talk about the impact of this budget and the associated work. Our recently reappointed and appointed MHCRC commissioners, Richard Roach and Wally Brown, and also Open Signal Board member, Tayshaun Snow. Following their presentation, OCT Director Elizabeth Bettis and Financial Manager Michael Wong will be available to help answer any additional questions that may arise. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rich, Wally, and Tayshaun in that order for the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Rich Roach. I've been on the commission for about a year and a half, and I appreciate you letting me be on the commission. It's been a great experience. Thank you for taking the time to hear from us today. We're here to highlight a couple of the many things that the MHCRC has done over this past year and to seek your approval of the fiscal year 2021 through 22 fund budget. You should have received the proposed budget in your meeting packet. As a reminder, the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission is a partnership among Gresham, Fairview, Portland, Troutdale, Woodville Village, and Multnomah County. Each of these jurisdictions appoints community representatives to the commission. Wally Brown, who's with us today, Corey Murphy and I are your volunteer representatives. The commission has oversight, enforcement, and public benefit responsibilities for the cable services franchises with the cities and the counties. Portland currently has one cable service franchise through Comcast, CenturyLink, now known as Lumen, stopped providing cable in December of 2020. The MHCRC navigates ever-changing technology and public policy to support community needs for local authority over the public right-of-ways and compensation by cable companies, a consumer watchdog to assist subscribers with issues and solutions for addressing local representation and media and digital equity issues. At this point, I'll turn it over to Wally.
Thank you, Rich. And so with that, I'm going to share my screen to make time for... We had some time flips, so I'm going to go through my presentation, then I'm going to shoot it over to the Office of Community Technology. Is everyone able to see my screen? Yes. Okay, awesome. All right. So I'm going to skip past what Rich has already so kindly. Our Commissioner Roach has so kindly went out. And first, special thank you to council for having us and the OCT staff for helping us out. Okay, so Commissioner Roach and I are still relatively new. So if there are any mistakes in this presentation, that is, it's on my behalf because I made this part of the presentation, so please bear with us. All right, so this is, Commissioner Roach has already gone over this, so I'm going to skip past this section. We're talking about money today, so we just had a fresh audit. We had a fresh review of our programs from 2014 to 2018 for community technology grants. About 3.5 million was awarded to 41 projects between 2014 and 2018. More information can be found on our website. Yes, and so recently, at our most recent meeting, we approved about eight total grants for about 400, around a total of $400,000. David Douglas School District Circus Project Northwest Documentary, Portland State University Northeast Steam Coalition, The Old Church, Northwest Alliance, and another national alliance for Filipino concerns. Okay. What was that program a part of? That was a part of TechSmart. So you fund us, you help fund us, and we help fund other people. And those TechSmart initiatives typically goes to school districts. We've funded at least five. Yeah, and so back in 20... Since it launched in 2014, we made a goal of making investments of $16 million by around the state. So far, we were on track. So our goal was $16 million, and so far, we've spent about $15 million, $15.5 million. So we are almost there. We have another report. We have another report that will be given by Pacific Research and Evaluation. They'll give a final report on how we did. Okay, so how many teachers has our money helped so far? About 268. Those are counted by classroom. And then how many school districts? We have five in our region. Okay, so for this fiscal year, for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, we gave out 14 grants for about $960,000. All right, and so the purpose of these grants is to be responsive to needs identified by the community and support organizations to use technology in addressing their issues. Of course, with COVID that just hit, there were a lot of unprecedented issues that just came to light that we were able to flexibly help out with. Okay, and so on to the money. We have our recent audit and appropriation and our proposed budget. And then regional allocations for an overview of what we'd be approving today. Okay. And after this part, I will pass it to Open Signal. Okay, so we have an audit. This presentation should be in your agenda, so you can click to follow the link to the audit. We received a clean audit from the city budget office. And we just have, we've been having Portland contribution, so thank you for voting to allocate about $348,000 for 2021 through 2022. If you look at our proposed budget, it's going to be on page number five of the attached document. Basically, we've had, we're funded by taxing cable revenues. And since less people are, more people are pulling the plug on cable, our revenue has been decreasing since fiscal year 18 and is projected to continue decreasing. And so that's kind of, that's kind of been the trend from franchise fees and that. So we get council allocations and we get franchise fees. And so in reference of the money that we get, so Portland's approving $348,000. Here's what everybody else who's on the MHCRC is donating or is allocating. Okay. So the annual budget from all jurisdictions, about 43... Amassed about 43% of the MHCRC's total operating budget, and the rest of the budget comes from elsewhere. Okay, here's a perspective. So about 65% of our total allocation comes from the city of Portland, 25% from Gresham, and the remaining from East County. The remaining 35% from East County. And so it's broken down here as like, how much of the projected franchise fee revenue that they collect? Like Portland don't, Portland allocates a lot, but it's 6% of their total franchise fee revenue. Wood Village doesn't donate a lot in terms of total number, but the most in terms of relative proportion of franchise fee revenues. So you can see how everybody's contributing to it. Okay, and so we'd love to use the, this revenue to supplement the operating budget and continue funding certain one-time projects. We have upcoming Comcast franchise fee renewal negotiations coming up. The remaining budget, it's funded by other resources, mostly to administer dedicated capital fee revenues and related programs like community technology grants and helping support Open Signal financially and emotionally sometimes. And then we want to help support outcomes that basically are high... What do we do with the money? We want to help support outcomes that are highlighted by community, like helping us basically be future-focused and helping the community bridge the digital divide by helping catalyze that transition to acquiring the rapidly evolving technology, like new cameras, upgrading internet, and so on and so forth. We just want to help people leverage resources to be able to, you know, address the future or the present, which was yesterday's future. So thank you all, and I would, we would love to advocate to please approve the budget. And with that, I will pass it to Open Signal if there are any questions.
There is a question from Commissioner Hurst.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Wally. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and being new is a good thing. And you did a great job, by the way. Very succinct presentation. But you got me when you talked about the trend of the reduced franchise fees. And, and of course, we can see the trend in the budget reduction. So what does the feature look like?
So if you don't mind, I can jump in real quick. Elizabeth Perez, Director for OCT in the MHCRC. In the next year, we are using some of the interest from our fund budget to work on a strategic plan for the next few years. So we've allocated money to really dig in deep and figure out, okay, as this declines, what does that mean for the MHCRC? What does that mean for all of our jurisdictions? So we should have findings from that in early 2022. And I'm happy to bring that back to you.
Wonderful, yes. It just, I wasn't even headed that way until the presentation, but that's why Wally did such a good job, right? But it also begs the question, franchise fees are in fact a thing of the past. And as we think about investing in community, we have to think about what the future investments look like. And then I was also struck about how much investments we make into schools. And just wondering, we keep pouring more money into schools, and I'm just wondering if anybody's tracking just whether or not we're having the kind of outcomes that we say we want as everybody keeps pouring more money into our public education system. So if that's giving us the outcomes that we want, cool, but I'm not seeing it. So I'm struck by just how much of an investment we make, and the question is, what do we get back from those investments? Who's tracking that?
I can speak a little bit on the I C, Derek. Derek Bradley?
Derek Bradley. My, there he goes. My apologies. Apparently, he unmuted himself accidentally. So again, I appreciate the presentation, but those are the two big questions that came up. What are we getting? What's the return on investments in schools? And what's the new vision we have for the future? So thank you.
I can briefly respond to your second question. One of the cool things about the grants that we give out is they don't fund operations so much. We kind of fund, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, we kind of, people normally come to us to fund like hardware and things that are like, hey, we want to buy 10 laptops to run a camp where we're using the laptops to teach about video editing. And so oftentimes, you can, and I'm going to be working with them to kind of help track backwards and help map out like where money is going, so it's more pretty visuals. But basically, the money that we give out, you can kind of, you can almost track it down to the asset that they purchased. Because they're like, hey, we want $60,000, and that'll be six, six video cameras? So that's like, okay, that's $10,000 per camera.
Thank you. That's really helpful, because I, you know, from where we sit on the council, we just, we just pour so much money into kind of the status quo kind of organizations. I'm always curious if we're putting all those dollars and programs together and asking the question, what are we getting back? Are we getting what it is we think we're buying? So thank you. It sounds, it's exciting. I'm a huge fan because I know providing media access to folks who, A, don't normally have their voice heard, and B, being able to use their own voice is such a critical community asset. In fact, I call it the hidden asset that we have that most community members don't know. And so I'm a huge fan. But again, I don't want it to disappear because we have an old model that doesn't work for the future that we're moving towards. So thanks.
100% agree. I think that's a really good transition to Taysha's presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and council. My name is Taysha Snow, and I'm a board member at Open Signal, Portland's community media center. Rebecca, could you share your screen? I'm going to do the slides so I can make sure I can take a look at my notes. So located on northeast Martin Luther King Boulevard Jr. for over 30 years, Open Signal is becoming nationally recognized or nationally known within our field for rethinking what community media centers can be with racial equity at the forefront of all of our work. In a typical year, Open Signal provides to Portland a cable broadcast on five channels, airing local and independently-produced content, including city council meetings just like this one, reaching 400,000 homes in the metro area. Our facility includes two media production studios, an editing room, and a media equipment library stocked with professional cameras, lighting, iPads, and laptops. We teach camera skills, studio operations, editing, and animation on both onsite and at our space and in partnership with local schools and nonprofits. This past year, we pivoted in response to the unique needs of COVID-19, and I'm pleased to share with you just some of the ways in which we showed up. We immediately provided extended equipment and laptop loans to mission-aligned nonprofits, including Vanport Mosaic, African Youth and Community Organization, and Street Roots. Our city council meetings barely missed a beat as we remotely recorded and broadcast roughly 140 council sessions this fiscal year. That's over 300 hours of content. We also help local organizations stream their programs online. And this include, including candidate forums with Imagine Black and the Urban League this past fall, and Juneteenth teach-in with Albina Vision Trust earlier this month. On our channels, we aired regular COVID updates from the governor and vital safety alerts. Embracing our role as a community hub and a technology leader, we also served as an assistance center for the 2020 census. We provided resources in person and virtually to an estimated 20,000 Oregonians in 13 languages to help compete, complete the census online. Recognizing the need for emergency aid, Open Signal Labs, our initiative for Black filmmakers, crowdfunded a campaign which put nearly $25,000 directly into the pockets of Black media makers in Portland. Last August, we also unveiled a beta online network in response to the increased need to connect online. This network streams our cable channels for the very first time. You can watch it, watch opensignal.org, along with additional digital content from across the community. We call this, we call this place, we call this a place for Portland to see itself and be seen. I just love that. Okay, in the winter of 2021, we collaborated with Outside the Frame, a partner nonprofit that works with homeless and other marginalized youth. With additional operating funding from Metro, we helped the youth produce 360-degree films. They made work about code-switching, aliens, music videos, and personal biographical stories and more. This spring, our new media fellow, Miles DeBaston, a deaf artist and technologist, introduced his first-in-the-world technology that creates captions and sign language within virtual spaces. The new media fellowship is typically just a three-month experience, but because of the expanded timeline due to COVID, Miles was able to work with his mentors for over a year to develop this technology. This project was supported with additional funds from the National Endowment for the Arts and the Regional Arts and Culture Council. So where are we headed next? We are focused on making sure that we get our resources into the hands of Portlanders who need them the most. And per our agreement with the city of Portland, we assertively center our priority communities, media makers who identify as Black, Indigenous, people of color, living with disabilities, English-language learners, people of low income, and our nonprofit partners who align with these efforts. During COVID, we've reinvented the way in which we deliver education and facility use with a focus on application-based services that support those in our priority communities. In the coming year, with the support of substantial multi-year grant from the Office of Community and Civic Life Seed Fund, we also plan to grow Open Signal Labs to become a major media producer and employer of Black media professionals in Portland, creating a microeconomy specifically for Black film. Open Signal exists because of our partnership with the Office for Community Technology and the MHCRC. Only because of this support have we been able to provide professional equipment, production facilities to nonprofits and individual media makers who are least likely to have access to these tools. Thank you for helping us become truly equity-driven community media space.
And before closing, I want to thank the city council for supporting this partnership for the past 27 years. We thank you for your time today, and as always, contact us if you have any ideas, questions, concerns. We're here to work with you. And to conclude, I respectfully request that the Portland City Council approve the MHCRC's Fund Budget for 2021 through 22. Thank you very much for your time.
That concludes our presentation, Mayor.
Mayor can't find his unmute. It's okay. We'll give you a sec. It's all good. Okay. He's having a little technology issue himself at the moment, but let me just say, on behalf of the council, just, A, what a fabulous presentation that was, and B, how grateful I am with the commitment that you have to ensuring that community media is accessible to the people with the least access to media at all, right? People of color, immigrants, I just love the, the turning voice into a sign language. I just love, love, love that creativity. Mayor?
So I am officially Ness for just a moment, so I don't know what happened there. For some reason, the unmute isn't working on my computer, so I've got Ness over there figuring it out. He may just log me off and log me back in. So you can just call me Ness for the rest of the day. Thank you for the presentation. It was outstanding. I appreciate it. I echo everything that Hardesty just said. We are in an era where access to communications is paramount to success, whether it's in school, whether it's employment-based, whether it's just getting information in your own neighborhood. Obviously, you need access to these digital resources and assets. And I've just got to say, you guys have been great partners to the city council. I feel like we've really been in the lead in supporting digital equity and access to digital tools. And we have a great bureau, the Bureau for Community Technology, the Office for Community Technology, and their director Perez has done just a fantastic job. So thank you all. Before we go to the roll, I want to see if there's any public testimony on this item, Kealan, since this is an emergency ordinance.
We do have one person signed up. Bernard Day Leva Day.
Great.
Bernard, are you able? There we go. Looks like you're unmuted now.
Yeah, but I wasn't intending to talk about this.
Which item were you hoping to speak to?
About the sweeps, about the ordinances for camping.
Okay, we will get your winner number. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Great. All right. Can you hear me? Okay, now from this computer. Great. I'm just running all over the house trying different things.
So good, Mayor. So I will move that we adopt the budget as presented.
Thank you. This is actually an ordinance. It's an emergency ordinance. It does require a motion, but I do appreciate that. Kealan, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Rubio and Director Elizabeth Perez for your leadership and great presentation, Wally, Taysha, and Richard Roach. Good to see you. I just want to say that this work looks great, and I was actually moved by the presentation, some of the partnerships to support and advocacy for all of our constituents, the stretching you're doing to make it more equitable. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Some of my most fun times were as president of the board for what used to be Portland Community Media before it became Open Signal. And I have to tell you, I'm so thrilled to see so many young people involved in community media today because I was old when I started there, and I am a little older now. So it is really fabulous to me. And excellent work, Director Perez and Commissioner Rubio. This is what's going to help us rebuild coming out of this pandemic, is people seeing themselves reflected in the city we're going to become. And the role that community media will play in that is really vital, because nobody tells our stories like we do. I'm very happy to vote aye. because nobody tells our stories like we do. I'm very happy to vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank Richard and Wally for your service on the commission, and also Taisha for your service on the Open Signal Board, and also to Director Perez for this important stewardship. It was really, really wonderful, just like my other colleagues have talked about, to hear about the direct impacts of these investments because it really gives us a living and breathing feel for them. So I stated previously, it's a long-time partnership, and I'm eager to work with these commissioners and Director Perez as the sector in our, in our technological landscape continues to evolve. So I look forward to that work ahead. Congratulations and thanks. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Vote aye. Thank you. Great presentation as always. The ordinance is adopted. Colleagues, we're ahead of schedule, so we'll go to the regular agenda. We will do items 518 and 519, and then we will move back to the time-certain agenda. So with that, Kealan, please read emergency ordinance item 518.
Amend council organization and procedure code to clarify attendance by electronic communication and meeting location.
All right, this emergency ordinance updates city code 3.02.025, which allows council members to attend public meetings electronically during an emergency such as the COVID-19 pandemic. We now have the opportunity to embrace hybrid meetings that allow greater flexibility for council and support more equitable access for the public. The proposed changes will allow for council members and the public to attend and participate in public meetings electronically regardless of emergency status. My office's legislative director, Ness Zolin, is here to present the ordinance. This is his very first time presenting in front of the Portland City Council, so do not hesitate to grill him. Welcome, Ness.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be here with everybody. My name is Ness Zolin, Legislative Director in Mayor Ted Wheeler's office. I want to thank Carmen Merlot, Elise Rosenberg, Lindley Reese, Kealan McLeemont, and all council offices for working together to bring this ordinance forward for your consideration today. City Council has been meeting over electronic means since March of 2020, the beginning of the state of emergency declared for the COVID-19 pandemic. City Code currently states that this virtual form of convening can only take place when an emergency exists. The ordinance before you changes city code to allow for council meeting participation in person or by electronic means for both council members and the public. A team including the Auditor's Office, Technology Office, Facilities, and Council Offices have been working on the Council AV Technology Project to ensure the operational viability of this combination. It has been the sentiment of all council offices throughout this process that the improved flexibility and equity of public participation while convening electronically is very much appreciated and needed. This code amendment provides an option to the public to join and members of council to attend and participate in council meetings by electronic means or in person. Thirty days after the emergency declaration is lifted, the city will need to provide a location for the public to listen to council meetings, even if all members of council attend electronically. It is anticipated that this location may be provided in City Hall or other location to create the safest environment possible for council, staff, and the public. To allow evaluation of whether electronic participation by council continues to provide satisfactory collaboration and participation once city offices begin reentry, this new code will apply for one year, at which point council will decide whether it is appropriate to continue in this manner. We appreciate the collaboration across offices and the unified approach to this ordinance, which allows for greater accessibility for the public and council members to attend these meetings. Thank you for your time and consideration as we ask council to pass this emergency ordinance. Elise, Lindley, Kealan, and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Hardisty has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ness. Excellent job, very clear presentation. So my question is, what are we going to be measuring over this year? How are we going to know whether or not the impact that we're having on community engagement?
That's a great question, and I'll chime in first, and if Elise or Lindley or Kealan are interested, we can go ahead with that. First and foremost, it's smooth operations to make sure that we have the necessary tech equipment in combination with physical and virtual spaces to allow for smooth operations. Second is, is in some way, and we can take a look at this through the AV Council project, in measuring how many people are participating and what sort of new types of people are able to access the council meetings, and so to create, to create a more equitable environment for, for the public to attend. Lindley or Kealan or Elise, do you want to add to that?
No, I think that was good, Ness.
Thank you. I think it's a really good idea. I can tell you that without the public being able to participate during COVID using virtual mechanisms, we would not have had the kind of public engagement that we've been able to enjoy. So, and I'm someone who actually really misses meeting people in person, but at the same time, I've heard over and over again from constituents that the flexibility of being able to to be listening in while you're waiting for your name to be called as compared to the drive and the parking and waiting impatiently for your two-minute or three-minute testimony. So I was a big fan at the beginning of having the public engage. The one thing that I still miss is being able to see the public when the public is providing testimony. Are we going to make any changes to whether or not if we continue this virtual life that we'll be able to actually see the people who have showed up to testify?
That's a detail that I know Elise is working on. Elise, do you have anything that you know right now that you can share?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor, Council members. My name is Elise Rosenberg. I'm the Deputy Director of the Bureau of Technology Services. Pleased to join you this morning. So we're engaging with the Auditor's Office, with your offices, with Open Signal to do some testing about how this hybrid environment could work from council chambers or from other locations, including having a camera for the in-person testifiers to show, and then, of course, folks have the option of coming on camera if they have the means and the desire to do so by participating in Zoom. So I think we're all going to be learning a lot together as we come out and reenter over the next few months, and so we're hoping for flexibility and for feedback from all of your offices as we, as we explore together and certainly open to doing that.
Well, thank you, and I'm hopeful that the public will have a way to provide feedback as well. I'm sorry, I actually muted myself. I was actually acting like someone else on council. I was, what was I saying? I was saying that this is going to be good. I hope we give the opportunity for the public to be able to weigh in as well because I know they have a lot of opinions about what, what works and be good to be able to take all that into consideration. Thanks. Good work, Ness.
I have a question, and it doesn't need to be resolved today, and it's raising a problem that hasn't happened. But it's just something that I've been thinking about, Ness. Obviously, as Commissioner Hardisty indicated, without electronic communications and Zoom, which most of us didn't even know existed 14 months ago, we would not have been able to hear public testimony at all. We've also heard from some people, particularly people who don't live close to City Hall or work during the day or struggle with some disabilities, that they prefer the electronic communications to the in-person communications. So there are definitely positives. What has not happened yet is, you know, we have still managed to maintain local government as a local space for local individuals to chime in on their community, and we haven't had a lot of people sign up from out of state or from other places. If I can put this diplomatically, just because they can and to chime in and express their viewpoints of Portland, Oregon, or the leadership of Portland, or anything else. Under current law, and so I guess I'm now looking towards our legal counsel, there is nothing that prohibits somebody from another state or indeed another country from chiming in on our city council meetings. Is there, Lindley?
There, there is not, and in fact, state law was just passed that's going to require us to allow both in-person and remote testimony starting in January. So no, we, I think that we haven't seen a big uptick in people from outside doing it, but there's no prohibition.
No, I mean, it would be kind of weird for somebody from Munich to chime in on our parking code or something, but it could happen. And, and so I guess we're just embracing the brave new world, and we'll see where it goes. I think on balance, this is very positive, and I'm very supportive of it. It will just be interesting to see in the years ahead if there are other unintended consequences to this.
Well, I mean, Mayor, I have people from all over the world weighing in on my social media, so.
So do I, unfortunately.
And so clearly, there's a, maybe there's a difference of a firewall that exists in our systems that, that we've worked very hard to maintain. I think we, we've had good technology infrastructure in place, and I think that was the biggest challenge in moving into this brave virtual world.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. So if there are no further questions, is there any public testimony on this item, Kealan?
Yes, we have one person signed up, Dan Handelman.
Welcome, Dan.
Can you unmute, Dan?
Okay, I'm attending by phone and computer. Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah, you sound good, Dan. Good morning.
Great. Hi, I'm Dan Handelman. He/him pronouns. I'm with Portland Cop Watch. We agree that city council members should be able to attend by phone or electronically. They are unable to get to City Hall due to illness or health concerns, family emergency and stuff like that, but ordinance makes appearing virtually seem to be the default rather than the exception. Probably don't have to tell you all this, but three of you were elected and seated during the pandemic and have never been in city council chambers for a regular city council meeting. The ability of the public to dial in remote could definitely be retained. It's holding council meetings during weekday working hours has always been a problem. But these past 15 months of Zoom public meetings where our elected officials has taken away a lot from our democracy. One person is testifying on Zoom. None of the rest of us can express what we're able to do in council chambers, although we usually had to do it on our fingerers. Council can no longer see when a majority of the audience is wearing the same color, same T-shirt, same buttons and stickers, or on occasion, standing up and turning our backs when particularly bad decision is. Having a remote viewing area for the community to watch city council meet virtually, provided for in the ordinance, is not a suitable solution. Would it be possible for council to see the reactions in that room? People observing the council be allowed to sign up? Come up to the microphone and testify if they didn't register online by 4:00 PM on a Tuesday? Pre-COVID elements of in-person council meetings need to be considered and reinstated. We urge council to modify the language so that whenever City Hall is open to elected officials, commissioners need to meet in person unless they're extenuating certain. City Hall is also open to the public. The public should be allowed in the chambers. Safety protocols, extra security, and a barricade in front of council's dais were all put in place well before the shutdown. If additional measures are needed for COVID safety, such as distancing and masking, council can add those to the protocols. We have raised the concern previously that ejecting a person from a meeting is now as easy as pushing a button, excluding them being able to log back in. Somewhere, Joe Walsh is wagging his finger at you all, pointing out that the misuse and overuse of virtual meetings is leading to the death of our democracy. It is reasonable to extend the current exceptions until all COVID restrictions are lifted, given that it's likely to happen well before July 1, 2022, and in fact, most of them are being lifted today. And the ordinance should be written more clearly as a break glass in case of emergency oriented, rather than let's keep meeting without having to see the public, as it's now constructed. One thing to think about, defaulting to remote attendance in Salem for legislators should have to travel hours and hours to get there. Local city council members should be able to show up once or twice a week, age with the public they represent. Meeting by Zoom has transformed public input into something that just does not. But it was signed by often Trudy Cooper.
Dan, you're cutting out a bit. Is he cutting out other people having troubles hearing him?
Yes.
We heard you until about 30 seconds ago.
Are you still? You were having trouble hearing me from starting at the last 30 seconds? Is that what you said?
Yeah, can you just read the last 30 seconds or so?
Sure, I think, you mean, it's reasonable to extend the current exceptions.
Then you cut out.
Yeah, okay, it's reasonable to extend the current exceptions until all COVID restrictions are lifted, but given it's likely to happen well before July 2022, and in fact, most exceptions are being lifted today, the ordinance should be written more clearly as a break glass in case of emergency-oriented ordinance, rather than not to keep meeting without having to see the public as now constructed. It's one thing to think about defaulting to remote attendance in Salem for legislators who have trapped to travel hours and hours to get there, but local city council members should be able to show up once or twice a week to engage with the public they represent. Meeting by Zoom has transformed public input into something that does not feel real or human anymore. And that was time I said by me, myself and Trudy Cooper and other members of our group.
And that's what I think you missed, Dan. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, and thank you, Dan. I really appreciate your testimony, and let me assure you, I I think that there are a lot of unknowns as we start reopening. As you mentioned, today is the first day that restrictions will be lifted. I don't know about you, but I don't plan to be in any crowds anytime soon. I don't know about you, but I still plan to wear my mask when I'm around people. I don't know. And what I know is that we aren't in fall flu season yet, so what we know is that we just don't know what's going to happen. But as a community, we should be prepared for all eventualities. City Council Chambers is a great example of, the city council does not have appropriate space if in fact we have social distancing requirements, at least between the council. I like my council members, but you know, they'll know if I want to be breathing the same air they're breathing for eight hours at a time. So we're going to all be learning through this year, so I appreciate the flexibility that this year will give us. And I can assure you, my biggest joy is being in big crowded rooms and hugging everybody in the room, and I haven't been able to do that for like 16 months, but I'm also not doing that anytime soon. So I'm going to be cautiously optimistic that we're going to start opening in a way that is slow and methodical, and we're going to learn a lot in the process. This is not about killing democracy. I wouldn't be here if I thought this was a killing democracy exercise. Even today, having 59 people on this call, the chance of having 59 people in the chambers today for this conversation is really not that high. And that's the reality because of when and where and how city council meetings happen. So I'm excited to have 60, now there's 60, 60 people who want to participate in this conversation today. To me, that's democracy. So again, I'm going to learn a lot this year, and I am a big advocate for the community's voice being heard in these chambers, whether they are virtual or otherwise. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hardisty, any further comments? If not, this is an emergency ordinance. Kealan, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Ness. Great presentation, and Dan, I really do appreciate your testimony. I support the flexibility that having access to reliable technology can offer me, my colleagues, and community members. While many enjoy in-person meetings and the physical feeling of community, I know I do. We just don't, many don't have that same opportunity or feel the same safety. I'm really happy to support administrative change to how we can normally do business and try something new that has proven to increase participation and engagement on all fronts. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
And I would have been the last person in the world that would have thought that we could be productive virtually. And, and I have to tell you. And, and I have to tell you, I, I look forward to building a new normal, but I do know we won't build it overnight. And having this kind of flexibility has allowed us to continue to hear directly from our community about the really hard decisions that we make. And so I am grateful that, I'm grateful to open Signal that within a matter of days, they were able to make sure that we would continue to connect with our communities. So I am very happy to vote aye, and good job, Ness.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank Ness and everyone involved for their work on this ordinance. And I also too want to appreciate Dan Handelman's comments because it's true, there's no substitute for the energy of the people when we come together. And at the same time, we're still dealing with the effects of COVID, and visibility also does matter. So we need to take every effort that we can right now to make sure that the communities that we serve are able to see us and engage with us. And the pandemic has actually forced this recalibration that we moved to electronic streaming, but I'm really glad that we're finding a way to keep it going. But what it does mean is that we also need to make sure more than ever that concurrently we invest in digital justice so that no communities are left behind in this, as we move in this direction. So we need to stay vigilant on that. But overall, I'm very excited to see how we can take it even further in the future and how we can continue to bring city government directly into community, rather than expecting the community to come to us. So I'm very happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
I strongly support this, Ness. Fantastic job. You did great. You're now a veteran of presentations before the Portland City Council. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Colleagues, I'd like to take a two-minute recess just so I can scope out the rest of the morning session with Ness, who needs to come in here from the other room. So don't go anywhere, just a two-minute recess, please. We are in recess.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Colleagues, so here's what I would propose, just given the schedule. We will go next to item 511. This is the second reading. I don't expect it to take too long. We will then do the item 512, which is an appointment. I would expect that to be no longer than 25 minutes. And then we will go to Commissioner Ryan's item 519 subsequent to that. And the reason I'm keeping an eye on the clock is I have an excused absence at 1:00 PM and I want to make sure that I hear all of the testimony and have the opportunity to participate in all of the discussion related to item 519. So it appears that we will be able to do that on this schedule. So Kealan, please read item 511.
Amend the zoning map, Title 33 Planning and Zoning, and Title 32 Signs and Related Regulations to Implement the Design Overlay Zone Amendments Project to Update the Process and Tools of the Design Overlay Zone and Related Code Sections.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is the second reading of the Design Overlay Zoning Amendments Project. Are there any other questions we need to discuss prior to hearing this? Hearing no further discussion, I'd like to propose we hold a vote on the matter. Kealan, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, BPS staff, Laura, Phil, and Sandra. And I am sure any other city employees behind the scenes and many of the infrastructure bureaus for your energy and hard work on this, your work in sitting through hours of community engagement events and being here with us these last two months has made it possible to update our process and tools fit for the changes we've experienced in the last decade and will continue to experience as our city grows. I also want to acknowledge Director Esau and the BDS staff. Thank you for your dedication to these much-needed changes and for the commitment to adapting these and enforcing them in your work as you are the implementers. I also really appreciate the feedback we heard from so many people, the affordable housing advocates and the neighbors, especially those projects that compete for federal and state resources. Your feedback was so important to ensuring that these changes didn't create further barriers to affordable housing, and we desperately need to make a dent in affordable housing shortage. And we should be making it easier for us to address this crisis, not harder. So great policy. Thank you. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
I want to stop by thanking Commissioner Rubio and the Office of Planning and Sustainability. It is never easy to make these kind of changes happen. And I want to really appreciate the openness to community engagement, the openness to making changes where there was opportunities for alignment. It is vital that we actually do this, these upgrades to our code because we need housing at every income level and every neighborhood, and we are a long, long, long way from that. And so, great work. I look forward to us continuing to make sure that we are making changes that actually help ensure that we have housing that people can afford to live in. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
With the adoption of this policy, we will be making a significant step at beginning to do our part in eliminating red tape to much-needed development and create a wider path to allow our community partners and developers to stay on track with our housing timelines and to fully utilize our funds approved by voters to build affordable housing. And so now's the time where the rubber hits the road and where our partners at the local level, local government, community-based providers, and the private sector will be critical partners to our work here at the city. So I look forward to monitoring the outcomes of this policy in the months and the years ahead. I also just want to reiterate my thanks to Director Durbin and all of the planning commissioners, and my big appreciation and gratitude, especially to Sandra Woods, Phil Mamoney, and Lola Lillard from Bureau of Planning and Sustainability for expertly and patiently guiding this process and helping us develop and refine this policy. And they did such an excellent, excellent job, as well as the design review members and the BDS staff for their thoughtful work and recommendations as well. And finally, thanks again to all of our council staff and every single one of our offices for working very hard to get this right. I'm really proud of our work here. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Did you call Commissioner Maps?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So first of all, let me just say the Doza project reflects the outcome of a critical and much-needed discussion about whether to improve the city's design review process and what that process should look like. It's been a long road. It has been a team effort. I particularly want to thank you, Commissioner Rubio, and your staff for your hard work on this. I think you did an exemplary job of leading this through. I also want to work, acknowledge the hard work of our design commission members and the Bureau of Development Services staff who support the commission, particularly Cara Fiavante and Stacy Monroe. I want to commend them on their excellent improvements that have been made to improve the city's design review program, making it, I believe, more efficient, more focused, more predictable, and more effective for all participants in that process. As we also heard the results of these improvements from the design commission chair Julie Livingston and her testimony, and from BDS staff, I'd like to underscore those points, and thank you for your hard work on this. The city now offers more efficient and more effective hearings, greater participation and access to information for all participants, especially with the remote meeting options, additional training for staff and our design commission members, and better communications about roles and responsibilities throughout the design review process. I want to thank you all for your incredible work to help our design review program evolve. Second, I want to thank the Planning and Sustainability Commission and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability staff, particularly Sandra Wood, Phil Mamoney, and Laura Lillard. The PSC and BPS staff have helped to create a process with our other commissions amongst city bureaus and the public to identify tangible changes to improve upon our city's code. In particular, I want to thank our former PSC Chair Kat Schultz, who also served on the city's design commission for helping to explain the role of these new design standards. She said, and I quote, "Let the design standards do the work of the design commission," unquote. Thanks to everyone's hard work, I believe that we're making positive changes to our code and adopting design standards that help the city to achieve just that. I also want to thank my city council colleagues and all of their staff. In particular, I want to acknowledge the hard work of our staffs, Charity Montez, Derek Bradley, Adam Lyons, and Rico Luon Valerio. You guys don't always get the credit you deserve, but you put a ton of work into this, and I think that shows great collaboration amongst our offices. So thank you all for making us look good. I want to recognize the hours of research and the meetings behind each amendment concept. I have appreciated being able to work through this proposal in a thoughtful way, working across bureaus and commissions and with our constituents. I believe this work together with community helps make the proposal a better final product. So I want to thank everyone in the community who took a lead role on this and really helped shape it for us. Thank you to all of those who testified on Doza. You shared incredibly valuable insights. You shared institutional and historical knowledge of Doza. You voiced the urgent needs of affordable housing and smart growth. You spoke to the need for civic engagement and how our neighborhoods grow and look, and helped explain why this proposal can help our city manage how it grows for years to come. Your testimony mattered. You provided the context. You provided the solutions. I like to believe that this final ordinance is a reflection of what we heard from that invaluable testimony. So thank you to everyone who took the time to provide it. And finally, I can't thank them enough. Our city attorneys, Lauren King and Lindley Reese, they've provided counsel on every part of developing this proposal, bringing necessary, and I believe unmatched insight to the table. We're fortunate to have them here at the city. Their work does not always get acknowledged. We don't always see the hundreds and hundreds of hours that they put into these proposals behind closed doors, but it is also certainly reflected within the body of this ordinance. Thank you for that. With that, I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. And with that, we will move to our last, I'm certain, item 512, please.
Point Joaquin Lopez and Leila Hale as Creative Laureates for Terms to Expire, June 30, 2023.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. And as many of you know, since 2012, the Creative Laureate has served as the city's official ambassador to the broader creative community. And up until now, there's always been one appointed laureate for a two-years term of service. But as we all know, these have been unusual times in our city, which has caused us to rethink this important role by expanding it to two roles because the last year and a half has shown us how essential arts, artistic expression, and personal connection are in times like these, and how the contribution of artists have helped build and continue to hold together this city and this community. But before I introduce our new laureates, I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous work of our outgoing laureate, dancer and choreographer Subashini Ganesan. The first creative laureate that we had was artist and photographer Julie Keef, and the second is Suba. And Suba has truly gone above and beyond during her time as laureate for our city. Not only did her fall, her term fall squarely during this unprecedented pandemic, but she also graciously extended the gift of her time to our city during this time by another year plus. And she's been incredibly busy every moment in her role, and her advocacy for art and social and racial justice has been felt by artists in every part of our community. A couple notable projects have included her engagement with Black, Indigenous, and people of color artists during COVID, and advocacy to disperse funds for recovery and healing. And her leadership in the Supporting Community Healing Through Art Project provides grants to artists to address grief and healing in this time. So on behalf of Portland City Council, I want to thank you, Suba, for the energy and passion that you brought to this role. We appreciate your service and your continued advocacy for artists and arts education in Portland. So I'd love to have Suba now join us just to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. I, I'm so grateful that, I mean, really, you, you've all heard me speak. I come with a lot to say, but today, I'm really coming with gratitude for, for the trust and, and the kindness that all of you at commission, at the city, have provided me, and to every single artist and community member who's related with me and, and worked with me. And this, this position is so beautiful, and I'm so grateful that, that we have this in our city. And yeah, the gratitude is here. I've learned tremendously. I've grown as a human being in so many ways, and so thank you. Thank you for this, and thank you for continuing this position and allowing arts to, to play the role it needs to play in a significant way in our city and across our region. Excited for our new creative laureates and excited for the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Suba, and I just again want to reiterate our appreciation for you. You've really taken this role to the next level for the city of Portland, and we're so grateful for your example, and it allows us to continue your good work. So we know we'll still be in contact with you over this next set of years. So, so again, we're so, we're so lucky to have you in Portland. So next, I'd like to introduce my policy advisor, Mona Schwartz, who will briefly review the process that got us here today. And then following that, we'll jump into our introduction of these two new laureates. Mona.
Thank you, Commissioner. And for the record, my name is Mona Schwartz, and I'm a policy advisor for Commissioner Rubio. So I'll keep this brief. I really want to thank all the incredible applicants for this position. We launched the process back in early April and received so many great qualified candidates. We compiled a community panel that was made up of current creative laureate Suba, several diverse members of Portland's creative community, and myself, who reviewed the applications and then recommended finalists to interview with the commissioner, who then selected these two laureates. We're very grateful that we were able to fund two positions this year, given the importance of arts as we heal and rebuild as a community. Now I will turn it back over to Commissioner Rubio to introduce our next creative laureates.
Thank you, Mona, and thank you so much for all your hard work on this. You really helped shepherd a really great process. So a Brazilian visual artist named Matheus recently said that art speaks where words are unable to explain. And I believe this is true for us in this moment. Art and artists have a profoundly important role in our community for healing, for truth-telling, for transforming, but also for telling the story of who we really are and also what we value. And because of all these things, there was a recognition among my colleagues and I that we need to create these two positions in this next term to capture the importance of these times and also to imagine and, and to reexamine and lift up important artistic expressions of community, identity, of justice, transformation, healing, and love. And I'm thrilled and honored today to introduce two exceptional people who have already demonstrated a deep commitment to these things and who are already also deeply grounded in community. So it's my honor to introduce artists Joaquin Lopez and Leila Hale as our next Portland creative laureates. Joaquin Lopez is a performing artist, musician, and counselor whose work is grounded in personal transformation, self-expression, and Latino queer identity. He holds a passion for producing cultural events that honor Latino, Latina, Latinx, Latina heritage, and Latino gay culture. Over the last 15 years, he has produced and developed countless musical and theatrical performances individually and in partnership with nonprofits and arts organizations, including the long-running Voz Alta, which has been, which began as a part of Latinx gay pride more than a decade ago. In June of 2019, he released Universo, an electro-pop album that pays homage to his coming of age as a gay man. He's the oldest son of the Lopez family, who for 20 years has run La Bonita Mexican Restaurants in Alberta Arts District, Overlook Neighborhood, and Southeast Division Neighborhood. Joaquin also runs a private counseling practice specializing in personal development. Joaquin also runs a private counseling practice specializing in personal development and the bicultural Latino experience. So, welcome, Joaquin. Leila Hale is a queer activist, organizer, dancer, and tattoo artist. Through Ori Gallery, Leila curates space for queer and trans communities affected by white supremacy by facilitating exhibitions, art programming, political education, and direct action. Leila has organized across disciplines and ideologies to merge the liberatory with the creative. After running an independent tattoo practice for several years, they joined Constellation Tattoo Collective in the summer of 2020, focusing on communities excluded from tattooing because of colonization, misogyny, and ableism. These brilliant and thoughtful artists will be exceptional and effective ambassadors to a more inclusive and representative Portland creative community, and I'm very excited for you to hear from them in their own words. So, Joaquin and Leila, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, everybody. It's amazing to be here. Leila, would you like to go first?
I'm just over here trying to be Portland polite and let you do your thing. Thank you, council. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Thank you, Suba, for creating an amazing body of work for us to build off of. I'll keep it short and sweet because I am not a public speaker. It's my worst nightmare. But I do just want to take the opportunity to express my thanks and to express my excitement. I'm really excited to work with Joaquin, and we are all both, we're both very relieved that there are two of us, and neither of us is responsible for filling Suba's shoes. And we're both very excited for the synergy that will come out of, you know, both of our extensive careers and our dedication for community. And I'm particularly excited to see what the role of arts in government can really look like and how we can forge this new normal together.
Awesome. Yeah, I did write some things down because I'm really emotional, so I thought I would share them. They're under two minutes, okay, everyone? So, and it's a little formal, but it's okay. So, dear Portland City Council and the residents of the city of Portland, I am honored beyond belief to serve as one of two creative laureates alongside the extraordinary artist Leila Hale, following in the footsteps of Julie Keith and the incredible outgoing creative laureate Subashini Ganesan. Today marks a journey for the boy in me who for so long searched for his voice and a place in this world. The arts have given me access to my passion. They have offered me tools to gain perspective and a language for which to express longings and yearnings to belong, create, and cultivate community. I stand here for all the artists and organizations who I have had the honor of working with, Hampton Mall Theater, Suaylou, the Hollywood Theater, Bag &amp; Baggage, Open Signal, and Milagro, my artistic home, amongst so many other amazing organizations. I stand here for the families and the youth who I have had the honor of serving at organizations such as Latinx Pride, Multnomah County Library, Familias en Accion, and Latino Network. The arts are an integral part of our community. The arts hold the opportunity for us to come together and to share stories to remind ourselves of where we've been and where we're going. In my role, I hope to create projects that celebrate the lives of our elder community to learn from their lived experiences. My goal is to form and join projects that bridge healing, leadership, and self-expression. As a queer Latino artist, my heart is committed to the lives and expression of our LGBTQ and BIPOC community. Serving as creative laureate will be my platform to champion creativity, arts and culture, and to amplify voices that need to be heard. Thank you. Thank you so much for this honor. It is with pride that I get to serve you.
Thank you so much, Joaquin and Leila, for those heartfelt words. And yeah, so I'm just, you know, I'm emotional too. So, I'm thrilled we get to work with you in the next few years and very excited to engage with you both in this role, and we look forward to being updated to your updates at council in the coming months. So, this is definitely not the last time that you'll be with us here. So, now I'll turn it over back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardesty had a comment or a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Joaquin, you're not supposed to make us cry the first time you come to council. That's not allowed. I know and love Leila and know the incredible artist that Leila is. And now, Joaquin, I'm looking forward to getting to know the incredible artist you are. And let me just say, Suba, from the day you were appointed, you were a light for the city of Portland, no matter where you showed up. And Julie Keith, what a name for my past, to know what an impact that artist had and allowing young people that look like me to get behind a camera and tell their stories, right? Man, the city of Portland has an incredible history of finding the right artist at the right time to make us better than we ever thought we could be. I look forward to each of you challenging us to be better than we think we can and to make us do more than we imagined possible. You are the right artist at the right time in the right place for our future. And I want to say, Mona, you, this is your first presentation in front of city council. You did a fabulous job. You were so prepared for this. You could have talked all day. I know. I could feel your excitement. Thank you very much for finding these incredible candidates. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. You've outdid yourself as the new kid on the block and as the arts commissioner. Wait till you see what the music commissioner has coming, so we'll talk. Thank you. I'm looking forward to what we get to do together.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardesty, would you like to make a motion to accept the report?
I would be honored to make the motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussion? Kealan, please call the role on the report.
Ryan.
Yes. Wow, that was powerful. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for selecting two creative laureates and for your advocacy in ensuring that these posts represent the richness and resiliency of the BIPOC, queer, and artist communities. I also want to acknowledge you, Suba. It was great to have your presence in the meeting today. And Joaquin and Leila, thank you for your service to our city. I really look forward to meeting with you and supporting you along the way. I vote I.
Hard to see.
I think I've said it all. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve our city. I'm happy to vote I.
Maps.
I'd like to thank Joaquin and Leila for their service to our city. I look forward to your terms as our creative laureates. I vote I.
Rubio.
I'd like to thank my staff, Mona Schwartz, for her great job on this project, and also Jeff Hawthorne and the City Arts Program for their partnership on this and other initiatives, and also Suba for your long service to our city. I'd also like to thank my colleagues for seeing the vision and approving this budget amendment for a second laureate. And to Leila and Joaquin, thank you for your willingness to serve our community in this new role. You both represent the best of Portland and who we are today. And we are so proud to have you both in this role, and I'm so excited to see what you do in it and what you do next in the community. So, congratulations to both of you, and I proudly vote I.
Wheeler.
These are important positions. Ultimately, the art in our community defines, in many important respects, our community. It helps express our voice. It helps us express our emotions and feelings, which are sometimes conflicted. And art helps us unravel some of the conflict that exists both within ourselves and within the community and amongst members of the community. And so, as such, it's a form of expression that the city of Portland has supported for a long, long time with our Present for Arts programs, with our support for the Regional Arts and Culture Council. And the fact that all commissioners have art and culture liaisons within their offices further shows how important this is to this particular council. And so, it being an important role that is played, it's important that we have really top-notch people serve as our laureates. And we've been really fortunate that we have had outstanding people step forward, Suba and others, and Leila and Joaquin. You are exuding passion, both of you. And I can tell you are exemplary for this role. I'm really excited for you. I think it's going to be fun. I always like to underscore that point. This will be fun. And we all stand ready to work with you. Let's see where we can take this. And my suspicion is we can take this pretty damn far. So, best to you. I'm happy to see you step forward. I vote I. The report is accepted and the appointments are approved. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for doing a fantastic job to bring forward great people. And with that, we will turn to item 519, please.
amend office of the Chief Administrative Officer Code to direct the Office of Management and Finance in the city's response to houselessness and urban camping related to the development of safe rest villages as alternatives to high-impact encampments.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, colleagues. I think I have a slideshow that should appear magically. There it is. All right. It's that simple. Well, good morning, colleagues and community. After months, and for me, it's I've been on the council about nine months, or I'm sure I'd be saying years right now, of dialogue with stakeholders from neighborhood associations, houseless advocates, business organizations, houseless providers, and houseless residents, and through many, many formal and recorded meetings with all of you on the Portland City Council, our peers at Multnomah County Commission, and with the Executive Committee of a Home for Everyone, we are ready to take action today to pave the pathway for Portland's houseless residents from streets to stability. Next slide, please. In 2019, 4,015 individuals were counted as experiencing houselessness in Portland. This was the largest recorded number in our city's history. In 2021, point and time count was not conducted due to safety reasons during COVID-19, but we all understand the pandemic was accelerated during the crisis. There have been many discussions about solutions, and while affordable housing is the goal, what our city needs most right now is a point-of-entry response to meet those who are chronically unhoused, people who have been experiencing houselessness for at least two years or repeatedly while struggling with a disabling condition such as mental illness, substance abuse, or physical disability. A person suffering with such conditions needs a ramp-up opportunity with access to housing, a case manager who knows them by name, and a resilience plan, all of which vastly improve the chances of sustained stability once housed. Next slide, please. So, here's our problem at hand in a nutshell. Neighbors experiencing houselessness are residing in parks, natural areas in the right of way, all posing serious risk from the perspective of public health and safety. And while the city of Portland works with our government, nonprofit, and business partners to solve the houselessness crisis, the city needs to identify a new comprehensive solution to camping in urban settings. Next slide, please. We can do better now that we have stable resources and voters and investors who have identified this crisis as our number-one challenge facing the city. Our providers are finally being lifted up with the passage of here-together supportive housing services measure and now the potential investments from the American Rescue Plan. There is an opportunity to bring more structure, improve gaps in service, utilize data for transparency, continuously improve, and to pay our practitioners in the service network living wages. Resources must be matched with a commitment to build a more efficient system focused on results. Recent role clarity between the city and the county provides the necessary alignment and focus that will lead to this impact. We have momentum. Next slide. The ordinance was drafted in very close consultation with the Streets Stability Task Force, which is comprised of policy staff from all five council offices. Feedback from the offices of Commissioner Hardesty, Commissioner Rubio, Commissioner Maps, and Mayor Wheeler were essential for us to create this ordinance. The task force met with members of Stop Sweeps PDX, campers at Lorris Park, to learn about the circumstances, and staff from my office met with multiple neighborhood associations to discuss alternative shelter strategies and the impacts of urban camping. We also engaged with elected officials from Multnomah County, Metro, State of Oregon on this topic, and in fact, it was a topic of conversation with Senator Merkley yesterday. The Impact Reduction Program and the Joint Office of Homeless Services also provided constructive feedback on the ordinance, as did Kayasan of Street Roots and the Oregon Law Center. It has been intentional and collaborative for months. It's exciting that we can come together and act today. Next slide. Our council is not acting in individual silos or as an island on this issue. Here's just a partial list of key stakeholders, state key stakeholders who've come together to influence and inspire today's ordinance. The entire map is not being laid out today, but the next steps certainly are. And everyone seems to agree that building a better system between the streets and long-term housing is needed. Next slide. Portlanders want action, and this ordinance creates clear standards by which Portlanders experiencing houselessness can expect to rest safely without fear or intervention by city entities. It explains the criteria used in determining which camps are high or low-impact and establishes zones that are deprioritized for intervention by the Impact Reduction Program. It ensures the Impact Reduction Program assists houseless Portlanders in accessing safe rest villages should they voluntarily choose to do so. And it clarifies the Impact Reduction Program is the responsibility of the entirety of the council, not simply the mayor or whichever commissioner overseeing the land-owning bureau on which a high-impact encampment exists. The ordinance does not criminalize houselessness, nor does it feed into the false binary of too sweet or not too sweet. It does provide a humanitarian response to meet our houseless residents where they are. Next slide. In terms of safe rest villages, Portland is looking to other cities for examples of success, and we're also learning from our own experiences with Dignity Village, Canton Williams Village, and St. John's Village, to name a few. Here are some concepts and examples across the West Coast. The styles reflect the city and their neighborhoods therein. This is a very Eugenian one. It's called Emerald Village. Go to the next slide. Down in Oakland, we have Cobb on Wood. And then, we go to the City of Angels, and we see a much larger village with some LA color. It is time for us to build more and serve more as we meet our houseless neighbors where they are. Next slide. Many of you know, this is personal for me, and I am not alone. Many of us have loved ones who suffer from a dual diagnosis, and helping them to move from the streets to stable housing is rough. My own brother, after many failed attempts by family to help, could not find a point-of-entry for him to receive services. Tim perished in a public restroom with a bus pass, $0.54, and the clothes on his back and a bottle of vodka in November of 2013. What if he could have entered a village and agreed to meet with caring professionals to guide him to behavioral and mental health services? Isolation and survival on the streets could be replaced by a community who has services and provides the most important aspect of living one day at a time. Connection. Next slide. People who experience houselessness face a whack-a-mole of challenges. By providing baseline services of care, a person experiencing houselessness has a hope to move into stability with connection to peers who are building a path. This is hope. This is resilience building. Next slide. Here's a vision of where this healing will take place. Safe rest villages are outdoor shelters which provide baseline services such as sanitation, hygiene, case management, security. hygiene, case management, security, and most important dignity and stability. Next slide. The council has directed city bureaus to provide a list of surplus property for use as outdoor shelters by today's date, June 30th, 2021. City bureaus will work to provide an urgent support for locating, selection, construction, and the opening of safe res, safe rest villages in a matter that demonstrates that this is one of the city's top three priorities. From here, the journey to stability can truly begin for our houseless neighbors. Next slide. Today's ordinance builds upon the action we took in April when we passed the Shelter to Housing Continuum ordinance. This action aligns with all three of our approved budget priorities in May. Houselessness, solutions, community safety, and economic recovery. Now is the time to invest American Rescue Plan dollars to address the number one emergency currently facing our city. And in July, we will hire a project manner, manager to lead this effort. Late summer, we will assemble a community engagement inclusion team to work on the ground while we establish sites with our neighbors. And in the fall and winter, construction begins and the villages will be populated. Next slide. Let the building begin. We will do this with openness and adaptability, adaptability as we move forward, sometimes failing forward as we adapt to findings from experience and from data. Next. Colleagues, let's take a bold step to meet our houselessness residents where they are and hope their best days and hence Portland's best days are upon us. Thank you. I think I turn it back to you, Mayor, and we go to testimony or?
Commissioner Ryan, that's, that's right. You have invited testimony. Is that correct? And if, if so?
Oh, that is correct. Commissioner Hardesty, would you like to go after the invited testimony? Okay.
I'll let you do the invited testimony, then we'll ask commissioners if they have questions. At that point, Commissioner Hardesty, if that'll work for you. Um, and then after that, we'll do public testimony. And I just want to give folks a heads up. We have quite a few people signed up for public testimony, so we're going to have to limit it to two minutes each. Um, so start thinking about your talking points in that regard. We're not going to be crazy serious about cutting you off at exactly two minutes, but we'd like you to think about that timeframe, please, so that we can, we, we really want to get through this because it's an important item. Uh, so, Commissioner Ryan, I'll just let you do.
Kealan, do you, you have the list of the invited testimony? Or is it Mark who's going to name them? I don't have the names in front of me right now.
I believe Mark might have it. Um, if not.
If not, I can just look in this Zoom room and call people. I see a few.
Yeah, uh, we have, I see Commissioner Myron is here and she's on the invited testimony list. I wanted to defer to her as an elected official.
All right, thanks. Welcome.
Uh, why, hello. Uh, almost did the mute thing and caught myself. And, uh, it is really great to be here today, um, Mayor Wheeler and council. Uh, my name is Sharon Myron. I am a Multnomah County Commissioner representing District One. And I just so appreciate being, uh, being here today to testify. The situation of people living unsheltered in our community on our streets uh, is a public health crisis. It's a public safety crisis. And as we've stated and heard again and again, it's a humanitarian crisis. Individual people have suffered and died as a result of living outside unsheltered, and our community as a whole has been deeply impacted. As an emergency physician working on the frontline and as a commissioner on the local board of health, I know firsthand that housing is indeed health. We hear that phrase a lot. Um, living outside causes tremendous harm and exacerbates harm from a variety of causes. Violence, substance use, communicable disease, chronic disease, mental illness, physical and intellectual disability, and more. This has been exacerbated by the past year of a global pandemic, and an already dire problem has worsened. For me, the focus for addressing the problem has always been around harm reduction. And, um, while we are striving for a better world where everyone is permanently housed, we need to be recognizing that the thousands of people living outside are subject to significant harm and our communities are being impacted as a result. I deeply appreciate Commissioner Ryan's work acknowledging the situation as it stands is unacceptable. And I appreciate all the other council members for your engagement, your deep engagement in this work. This ordinance today provides a framework for evaluating health and safety concerns related to encampments which affect those who are living there as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. We must keep a steady focus on that harm reduction approach that I mentioned and improving safety and quality of life for people experiencing homelessness while we're, my dog has opinions on this, while we are going through this process. We can't enforce our way out of the crisis focusing on an enforcement strategy without a path to housing, without the supports for people who need to get into housing, only further entrenches people who are houseless in a cycle between encampments, emergency departments, and jail perpetuating, perpetuating people's need to sleep where they can. A sidewalk, a park, the shoulder of a freeway, even if only for a few weeks or months until the encampment meets criteria to be removed. As the city moves forward with the new framework for identifying and removing high-impact encampments, it must prioritize the health and safety of those who are houseless and provide the alternative shelter housing to those who are displaced, along with practical support for their transition. The options provided, and I believe that, uh, what Commissioner Ryan has been working on and has described, must meet basic needs, be accessible and safe for people from marginalized communities, and must be connected to services and supports such as behavioral and physical healthcare, case management, and importantly, a bridge, a path to long-term housing. Toward that end, Multnomah County, we are, people don't know what the county does often, but we are the local mental health authority. Uh, and we provide behavioral health and human services as part of our core mission. We have a critical role to play in providing the services necessary to ensure that these safe dress, safe rest villages serve as the first rung of the ladder to greater health and stability rather than a dead end. If we invest the resources needed to provide safe, alternative shelter for people, a place to begin healing from trauma, addressing physical and behavioral health needs, acquiring ID, signing up for Medicaid, applying for public benefits, getting a shower, that holistic and long-term strategy will lead to a healthier community for us all. As we move forward, city-county partnership, coordination, and mutual commitment will be critical to the success of this effort, and I believe we have a really strong foundation to build upon. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you for being here, Commissioner. We sure appreciate it.
Next, we have Andy Miller.
Good morning, uh, Mayor Wheeler and members of the council. My name is Andy Miller, and I am the Executive Director of Human Solutions. As most of you know, we provide a continuum of responses to houselessness, and our approach focuses on dignity, agency, and choice for the people who our housing and economic systems currently fail. We support the approach of today's ordinance to lead with transparent priorities and compassion in how our public systems treat people sleeping outside. I share Commissioner Ryan's hope that this moves us beyond what is currently a very binary dialogue on harmful camp sweeps and towards new inclusive conversations to develop a dignified process that supports people moving from problematic sleeping places to ones that provide what we all need. Basic hygiene, safety, and a level of autonomy and security about where we sleep. And of course, our houseless community must be at the table and centered in the development of the process and the new villages. But our dialogue must move urgently beyond short-term measures. I believe I speak for many of my peers when I say our public conversation too often polarized around specific projects and temporary initiatives needs a new frame, a shared theory of change, a broadly held narrative that our community can look to for answers about how and when we, who are leaders, believe we will not only recognize housing as a human right, but realize it. Steps like today's ordinance must fit like puzzle pieces into a more detailed and hopeful roadmap for more than the next budget year or for an isolated single resource. Our community needs a multi-year, multi-resourced, inter-jurisdictional approach to ending this crisis so they can see the steps along the way as working together toward our envisioned end. As providers, we stand with you on reminding our community that our programs and housing models are working, and they are. They are exceeding many of our targets. But we need the courage to say more and to declare that our housing systems with their racist past and profit-centered underpinnings continue to fail too many. Our community needs to understand how we are committed to reforming those systems. We need to confirm that we support approaches like Housing First, a worldwide proven best practice, and demonstrate that our affordable housing development systems are pivoting quickly to invest more deeply and more urgently in that model. And we need to be clear how we will honor and invest in alternative models for housing, models born from the creativity and spirit of people currently surviving this crisis. I support this ordinance, but want to see it fit into a much larger, more detailed, time-based roadmap of how we will make having a home the universal human right we believe it to be. Let's have that conversation soon.
Thank you, Andy. Next, we have Linda Weston.
Morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Ryan. I am Linda Weston. I'm the immediate past Chair of the Board of Directors for Travel Portland. I also own a small consulting practice, Danger Report Hub. And I am pleased to testify today in support of item five, one, nine, and to urge continuing progress in the creation of safe rest villages. Travel Portland believes every Portlander deserves a place to be safe. We have partnered closely with transition projects for many years, and we've also supported the passage of significant bond measures to increase funding for the accelerated development of compassionate and lasting solutions for houseless Portlanders. We applaud your unanimous passage of the Shelter to Housing Continuum Plan in April of this year, and we view today's ordinance as an important next step in delivering on the promise of that plan. Our industry is heartened to see the city and Multnomah County working closely together to implement a comprehensive strategy for providing safe shelter alternatives as well as permanent support, excuse me, supportive housing to the most vulnerable among us. We agree with Commissioner Ryan that safe rest villages will make our entire community safer. Uh, and we urge you to please continue your constructive work in this critical moment and seize this opportunity to restore our beautiful city as a safe and welcoming environment for everyone. Thank you for voting yes on item five, one, nine.
Thank you, Linda. Next and last, in terms of invited testimony, we have Jim Francisconey.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Jim Francisconey. And I'm here to testify in support of From Streets to Stability, which is, we view as an important first step. As Commissioner Ryan stated in his Sunday Oregonian column, a value which I know you, you and most Portlanders share, housing is a human right and houselessness is a human humanitarian crisis. As you know, Portland is a critical moment when several converging crises are threatening our progressive values. Homelessness is the obvious crisis. We see it everywhere and every day with associated trash and public health and public safety issues. This confounds and frustrates neighbors, many of whom who want to help, but don't know where to turn. What we do not see is the violence perpetrated directly on individuals experiencing homelessness themselves. Women are victimized. Veterans and others kill themselves as a result of hopelessness and underlying mental health issues. People of color, particularly those who are black or Native Americans, are overrepresented. People suffering from alcohol, opioid, and other forms of addiction die from overdoses in their tents or from heat or cold. In 2019, a hundred and nineteen human beings died on our streets because they did not have a safe place to live, and those are the ones we knew about. Therefore, we have assembled a group of concerned citizens who want to do our part to help you. Our goal is to help local government leaders alleviate the human, human humanitarian crisis and human suffering facing our city and county. To those hands, we have hired Eco Northwest and John Tabanya to conduct a cause and impact analysis of various alternative models based upon those intended to be served and for how long. We hope to have this work completed in thirty days. We are also working with several service providers to understand the continuum of services needed to support people experiencing homelessness and to develop standards based upon that information. Having measurable and meaningful goals will ensure that our investments in safer and healthier alternative shelter options as envisioned in this ordinance are fully leveraged as part of a longer-term strategy to reduce the number of people living unsheltered and ultimately to get people housed. The goal of these safe resting places is and must be to end homelessness of the people who reside there, not simply the relocation. On that note, we applaud Chair Kupore's commitment to better integrate behavioral health support and case management into housing and homeless services. We are working to support this effort as well. There is an important opportunity to align the work of Streets to Stability with the goals of the Supportive Housing Service Measure. Finally, we know that this ordinance has been stated already as only part of paving a pathway from streets to stability. We are hopeful because of the work that many on this call that you have done, including here together, that we're on the cusp of a comprehensive, integrative, and lasting strategy to reduce homelessness in our city, county, and region. Unprecedented federal, state, and voter-approved local investments, continued leadership from you, the county, and focused public and private partnerships give us hope that we can treat the homeless and our neighborhoods with the respect and compassion that they deserve and that our residents demand. In conclusion, we look forward to working with you on next steps, including working to reduce conflict between homeless and the neighborhoods as we work together to realize this common vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it's good to see you, Jim. Thank you, everybody, for your invited testimony. We appreciate it. We'll entertain questions at this point. Uh, we'll also have opportunities after public testimony. But if anybody'd like to ask a question now, particularly of this panel, Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before we get too far, um, into public testimony, I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate, uh, the enormous effort that Commissioner Ryan uh, and Mark Bond has brought, uh, to bringing us all together today. Uh, this is not an easy topic for anyone to talk about. People see it very black and white. Um, and the reality is that there's an awful lot of gray area, uh, that must be addressed and, um, uh, uh, and I just wanted to just take a moment to really appreciate what it took uh, to both put this ordinance together, um, the detailed collaboration that it took. Um, and I want to also just, uh, uh, I guess, uh, another caution. This is still a work in progress. What we do today is a beginning and not a ending. Um, and I, and we need everybody to continue to have an all-hands-on-deck approach because government will not do this alone. Nonprofits will not do this alone. Landowners will not do this alone. This is an all-hands-on-deck, and there is no perfect policy that is going to make every Portlander housed today. Because if it was, we'd Because if it was, we'd have passed it a long time ago, and we would have done it. And so what I'm hoping, what I hope what I'm doing, Commissioner Ryan, is actually limiting expectations that we are on a journey and we have not fixed it today. And so, but I do want to applaud the enormous lift that you, Commissioner Ryan, and you, Mark Bond, I know, because I talk to you a lot, and I read a lot of what you wrote. But I just want you to know how appreciative I am at the leadership, at the vision of what was possible. And I look forward to hearing from the public and us getting to a vote today so that we can continue what will be very, very difficult, challenging, and sometimes we're going to have to change course to do something better. And I look forward to the journey that we will all be on together. So just wanted to take a moment to appreciate you. Look forward to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Kealan, how many people do we have signed up for public testimony today?
Yeah, 15 people on the call to testify.
All right, very good. Two minutes each, please, name for the record. And Kealan will just call you in the order on which she has you on the list.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call the first three: David Tonley, Keith Comess, and Marisa Espinoza.
Welcome, David.
Good morning, everyone. My name is David Tonley, and I'm speaking to you all as a resident of the Laurelhurst neighborhood. When I received word that Commissioner Dan Ryan was introducing a new ordinance as an output of the Streets to Stability Task Force, it piqued my interest, particularly as the impact statement references the encampment at Laurelhurst Park. For nearly a year now, I have worked relentlessly with my neighbors to try to convince the city of Portland to help restore some sort of balance to the situation at Laurelhurst Park. As a resident of Laurelhurst, I'm all too familiar of the impacts that homelessness has had on the park and the broader residential neighborhood. I admire Commissioner Ryan's efforts to take action for the houseless community of our city. However, it is my belief that this ordinance falls far short of creating clear solutions that balance public safety, public health, and neighborhood livability, as stated in line item 17. In fact, the ordinance fails to address any neighborhood livability concerns. I've spoken with representatives from all of your offices, and the one thing that I continue to hear over and over again is the sentiment that we at City Hall hear you and that we at City Hall are talking about this. But where is the change to the status quo? I know that finding solutions to homelessness is difficult, but what should not be difficult is clearing away trash that is spilling into the parks and onto the streets of 37th and Oak, picking up drug needles and used syringes that litter the children's playground and the tennis courts of the park annex, enforcing existing parking ordinances for vehicles that line both sides of the streets, all up and down 37th and Oak, or enforcing basic safety standards for propane tanks, barbecue grills, and other open fires during these dry months of the summer. I know that this is a journey and that there's more to come. So my ask is that since this is a work in progress, that you take these concerns into serious consideration as you move forward with the implementation of this approach. I hope that you all can and will do better for our community, and I look forward to working with you all on this in the future.
Next up, we have Keith Comess.
I have no specific verbal comments to make. I submitted all of my questions in writing. Thank you.
Next up, we have Marisa Espinoza.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And I apologize if I go over time. I prepared three minutes of comments with many technical details, so I'll try to go quickly. So my name is Marisa Espinoza. I coordinate advocacy for Northwest Pilot Project, which provides housing stabilization services to people age 55 and up experiencing housing instability and homelessness. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. We truly appreciate your work to address the crisis of unsheltered homelessness. We gratefully anticipate Safe Rest Villages, knowing these investments impact long-term outcomes and reduce preventable trauma, mortality risk, and barriers experienced by many. However, in looking at this proposal, we're concerned that it may actually lead to substantial increase in removals of encampments. We see health and social impacts of removals on vulnerable and sheltered people and how sweeps can have life-threatening consequences, especially for seniors. Our understanding of current policies informed by conversations with HACCP and reviewing the Risk Assessment Tool cheat sheet, which provides a better picture of the process. By defining low impact with lower distance thresholds than what's listed on the Risk Assessment Tool, while specifying locations not currently named, more sites could be at significantly greater risk of being removed. For example, Section 1, Item D6, indicates encampments less than 50 feet away from park property lines going to high impact category. Compared to the cheat sheet, current policy only identifies parks with playgrounds, while the proposal includes all developed parks. In existing policy, only sites literally on park property receive maximum points. Another concern is Item D8, prioritizing sites less than 10 feet away from business or commercial property. In the cheat sheet, businesses and commercial properties are not named, though encampments in close proximity may still be prioritized for other reasons. Specifying businesses could allow more removals near businesses. In short, depending on how the changes comport with points, the point system, we worry about increased removals. Council should more carefully evaluate where this and existing policy could promote negative impacts. The HACCP tool requires updates, which also requires broad stakeholder input. We're also concerned about re-traumatization and perpetuation of racism and systemic inequalities in implementation. We strongly urge council to evaluate unaddressed gaps in the system and process while ensuring health and safety of both housed and unhoused residents. We truly appreciate the work of council to address the needs of people experiencing homelessness. We submitted more complete written testimony. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Peter Parks, Mimi German, and Heather Tate.
Hi, I'm Peter Parks. I am a housed resident of the Overlook neighborhood. I work with the Overlook Houseless Outreach Committee and Stop the Sweeps PDX. I support Hazel Nut Grove Village of tiny houses and its struggle to maintain its location in the Overlook neighborhood. Presently, the city has said there will be no effort to remove Hazel Nut Grove in the foreseeable future. So there is a serious concern about Hazel Nut Grove being forced to leave its location at some undetermined time. As to the ordinance before council at this time, I am concerned about removing the necessity of contacting a commissioner in charge of a bureau whose land has homeless campers on it. This ordinance, then, would allow the city to remove Hazel Nut Grove residents from their location on Peabody land without consulting Commissioner Hardesty. Thus, this ordinance would take away some of the checks and balances much needed in this challenging situation. I'd just like to make a comment that would be nice if we could see the people who are speaking from the community as well as the council. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mimi German. Mimi, are you?
Sorry, I had to figure out how to unmute. Sorry. My name's Mimi German. I live in St. John's. I'm a housed person who helps take care of our folks on the streets in St. John's primarily. So this is one of the most poorly-written ordinances ever attempted to slide into the council for a vote. It needs to be rescinded, not just taken back to the table, but rescinded completely due to the expedition of, anyway, of sweeps. This ordinance is great for profit-making village builders, but it's genocide for the houseless because it includes fast-tracking sweeps when there's no housing available right now for people to move into. And as a poet, words matter to me. Let's be clear, homelessness isn't the crisis. The crisis, the actual crisis, is what people experiencing homelessness are going through, not what the Portland Business Alliance is going through, or the mayor, or the experience of housed residents. The crisis is experienced by the houseless people struggling 24/7 under threat of sweeps and lack of support from the city. What we need is an ordinance for genuine humanity for those living and struggling on the streets of Portland right now. This ordinance will punish and fail the houseless once again because of the Parks Clause that's in it regarding people needing to be 50 feet away from parks. Not only will there be more sweeps, but Ryan's point is to expedite sweeps even more quickly. I remember being told as a child in Hebrew school how Hitler said a very similar thing regarding expediting the killing of Jews. This ordinance is another way to promote the genocide of our unhoused residents. People can't wait around for years while the city works at creating villages for some. What the city should be doing right now is providing dumpsters and trash bags at camps and picking up the trash at least twice weekly, preferably, providing more toilets around the camps and cleaning them at least three times a week. No one is currently cleaning them. I don't know if you know that. This is a fact. Remove responsibility from central city concern and rabid response to clean them and give contracts to reliable toilet companies like Sanne Can, et cetera. Provide onsite medical care multiple times weekly at camps. This would provide a way to learn who our houseless residents are and to get the dire care to them that they need. Provide onset means to get IDs to each person on the street. With no IDs, they can't pursue housing and so many other critical needs. Provide social workers to make visitations to camp a priority, along with telling each person when the social workers will be returning with the information that they say they'll be returning with. The reason I know these things is because I communicate with people on the street. These services that Mayor Wheeler says happen do not happen. Sweeps should never ever be the priority over helping folks on the street. And contrary to what Rabid Response has said, sweeps do not help the people they are sweeping, and neither do you, Dan Ryan. Shame on you and to all of you who bring this ordinance forward. We need housing in multiple forms for our unhoused neighbors, not a genocidal, psychopathic response to the houseless. I happen to know the woman who spoke from Northwest Pilot Project. I've helped to get six people in housing who are elders in St. John's because I know who they are, our elders, and I know how Northwest Pilot Project is amazing in what they do. They've also just told you in testimony that this ordinance will not help people.
Three and a half minutes, and we're going to have to ask.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Heather Tate.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm clear.
I second a lot of what Mimi had to say. Fast-tracking sweeps of homeless camps during an unprecedented global pandemic, and now just after this historic heat wave, is cruel and inhumane. No matter how you try and spin it, this ordinance will punish and fail the houseless once again. What it actually does is more sweeps and more quickly, when what you should be doing is addressing real issues like putting out dumpsters, cleaning up trash, providing toilets, and like Mimi said, giving contracts to reliable companies to actually clean the toilets we do have. Sweeps should never be the priority over actually helping folks on the street. Sweeps do not help the people they're sweeping. It's incredibly difficult and in a lot of cases impossible for people to get their belongings back after they get stolen from them during these sweeps. How is that helping anyone? Creating more villages is a great idea, but fast-tracking these harmful sweeps is absolutely not while they have nowhere to go. If there isn't anywhere for them to go, what you're doing is making the problem so much worse. It's unconscionable that city council is going forward with ways to continue this genocide. While you were all busy writing this hateful ordinance, the people of the city were out there actually helping people while Dan Ryan wasn't responding to our pleas for help, and Ted Wheeler was presumably on vacation, I guess. The same activists you demonize have been out there doing the right thing and actually helping people. I ask you to start focusing your energy on doing the same. Find some compassion, stop the sweeps, and focus on actually finding solutions to the housing crisis instead of simply stealing people's belongings, forcibly removing them from their homes, and claiming that you're helping. You're supposed to be serving the city, not just the PBA. Act like it and do not go forward with this horrible ordinance. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sabina Erdez, Chris Ledoux, and TJ Brownie. Sabina, are you able to unmute? Okay.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Sabina Erdez. Pronounced your day. I live in Lent, and I'm the Executive Director of East Portland Collective. Last Saturday through Monday, during record-breaking temps over 110 degrees, East Portland Collective volunteers such as myself were out from 10:00 AM until sunset running a mutual aid cooling station at the park to support our houseless neighbors and their pets who couldn't get to a cooling center, have an alternative to cool down and stay alive. After seeing people collapse from the heat all weekend, receiving no help from the city, and seeing how hard we've had to advocate just to get water faucets turned on at the park to help people cool down when they were experiencing heat stroke, I'm disheartened to hear what Commissioner Ryan is introducing today. Sugarcoated as a solution to homelessness is a proposal that thinly veils what it says on Page 3 of 5, a fast-tracking of sweeps with less need for the city to justify it. And I just wish that you could look people in the eyes as you cast your votes today and learn the stories of some of my neighbors whose tents you might end up removing. They are veterans, combat medics, who have fought in multiple wars and who now live in tents with their partners. I know them personally, like Angel, who ran the cooling station with us this weekend. Single moms, some with newborn babies, like Christina, who came to the park and asked us to pray with her this weekend. LGBTQ folks who have been turned away and rejected simply because of who they are, like Michelle, who was wheeling around her whole life in a suitcase this weekend with a very bad sunburn and told us that she honestly wishes this heat wave will kill her so she doesn't have to wake up to this suffering anymore. Elders like Steve, who refused transport to the hospital this weekend even as he was having a heat stroke because he didn't want to leave his dog behind. People battling a substance use disorder. These are some of the most vulnerable people in our society, and it's disheartening to see them used as an excuse for sweeps. Yes, we need to house them all, but we are not there yet. So until we can provide housing to people on their own terms without barriers, can we please at least not make it harder for them to survive? This summer is going to be extremely hot, and if we move people constantly, this poses additional risks to their health. Based on how I saw people collapsing in this heat over the weekend, I can tell you with certainty, people will die if you sweep their tents. However you want to sugarcoat this proposal by pretending that you are sweeping people in a kind way, it all still results in the same impact. There are no kind sweeps. Please stop making it hard for people to survive. And finally, I just want to recognize Commissioner Hardesty as the only commissioner who responded to our cry for help last weekend. Her staff showed up with exactly what we asked for, ice and food for our neighbors. And Portland Street Response, whom we all did not vote to expand, showed up again in response to the community's request and delivered what the community asked for, access to water so we can cool down the people overheating. They worked with us to install a misting station. They worked with the Water Bureau to install six faucets of drinkable water. And it definitely helped. I wish you could see the relief that it provided to people who are experiencing heat stroke, but then were able to cool down and not have to go to the hospital. Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Ledoux.
Okay, good morning. My name is Chris, and I'm a housed member of Southeast Portland who also supports folks living on the street. I'm deeply concerned about the proposal to require Safe Resting Villages for those who are unhoused to be legally run only by either public or nonprofit agencies. I think we must allow communities to have some level of sovereignty for their own management. I will note that I'm also concerned about the authorship for hazard to do cleanups with required, sorry, reduced requirements for authorization for city bureaus as this enforcement can cause more harm. I think that we have an issue of trust when the city refuses to fund citywide Portland Street Response. It is difficult to see that the city cares about community safety. I understand that the mayor does not like to term sweeps. It's kind of a term, then, demolition, destruction, brutality, violence, exposure to increased risk, loss of earned stability, displacement, theft of personal property, all of which are included within that term. Through mutual aid, I've worked with folks living on the streets, gained a connection, had interaction, glimpsed each other's humanity. I miss each of these people as the city has displaced them. When I see these spots empty instead of cleaned up, which I never see it as, instead I see loss, hurt, pain, struggle, risk resilience, courage, trauma, strength, joy, grief, sadness, faith, gentleness, forced eviction, repeated patterns of oppression, humanity. Must high and low impact be only defined by impact on businesses and residences? Sweeps have a high impact on communities. They are evictions. Evictions from camp have a high impact on communities. When a community member experiences a mental health crisis and is killed by the police, which has happened twice this year, this has a high impact on the community. The only other option proposed is nonprofit agencies, what we've been called. I'm going to try to be quick here. Recently, the Joint Office of Homeless Services shared with mutual aid networks that they could no longer get supplies. The supplies will be limited to nonprofit organizations. This feels absurd to me when I look at how supplies are distributed to the communities that need them. This can only be a result of the continued erasure of the role of mutual aid networks in supporting the houseless community. Mutual aid community does not get coverage by the media or by the city, but for the role it has played in the low death rate among humans that are living on city streets with no access to stable housing, it is a consideration of trust that the city is basically saying it will only work with nonprofit agencies. And this is only a part of the support that has been for this community. I would like to ask all of you to end the erasure about the roles of the mutual aid networks and the resiliency and capacity of the houseless community to manage their own safe rest village. I ask that each of you see the mutual aid communities, each of you have talked. I ask that each of you see the mutual aid communities, each of you have talked about the folks involved, but I did not hear this included. This is disheartening. Um, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for everything that you do. Please stop the sweeps. Don't make them worse. Um, and please try to, to limit the crossroads logic that we use in, in helping this community that doesn't deserve it. Thank you.
Next up, we have TJ Browning.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I just, I wanted to ask the question. And I, I, I think I know the answer, but maybe Commissioner Ryan or Mark Bond could answer this question. I think there's a misperception that the six villages that you envision are really gonna be the only safe areas for people who are experiencing houselessness right now. And that's not my understanding. I, I, I think that there's six that you have some real clear criteria for. But our goal is really to create as many safe sleeping areas as we possibly can on land owned by not just the city, but every other government in the Portland metro area that we can get a handle on their land. Am I accurate or am I misinterpreting what, uh, what we're doing today?
No, you're accurate. And Mark's been leading that facilitated conversation with all of our offices, as you know, for the last, uh, for months, a couple of months now. Mark, do you want to add anything? Cause there is a misperception at the moment.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Hardisty. You're absolutely right. The goal is not to just set up six villages that are going to be the end-all, be-all in terms of how we respond to this particular subset of the crisis. The goal is to create, both create a vision of what villages can look like, but also try to spur the general public to be able to build on the work that we're trying to do here today. And in terms of specific, uh, other areas that we're trying to set up for, um, places where folks can safely rest or camp, you're absolutely right. The goal is not to increase enforcement action by the Impact Reduction Program here. The goal is to create clear standards and guidelines by which the houseless community can safely understand that if they are camping outside of certain geometric geographic parameters, they can reasonably expect to be safe and free from, uh, from engagement, interaction by, by huckerb. It doesn't impact negatively within those geographic bounds. The goal again is just to try to, like you said, Commissioner Hardisty, create as many options for folks as possible.
Keela, next individual, please.
Thank you. TJ Browning.
Oh, good afternoon. This is TJ Browning and I am the Safety Chair for the Loyalhurst Neighborhood Association. I first want to start out by thanking Commissioner Ryan so much for attempting to help those who are seeking help. Commissioner Ryan, this is long overdue and much appreciated. And I just want to start out with that. However, the people who do, those individuals that you're targeting, oh, that was a bad choice of words. Sorry, Commissioner. Is a minority of those who are camping on the streets. And this isn't just my opinion. This was stated in last month's report to you from Lucas Hillier, who warned you that as long as unsanctioned camps continue to exist, campers will not go to shelters in sanctioned camps. This is data from your net, directly from your navigation teams. Those willing to go to the shelters and the sanctioned camps are simply stated not the problem for those of us who are housed, for the business community, and quite frankly, for the other campers on our streets. The service-resistant criminals and those who publicly state they don't want to live within societal norms with rules or regulations are the problem for the housed and the unhoused. Crime data around the sanctioned camps indicate that, that they're a safe place. We don't have crime in sanctioned camps or around sanctioned camps. That's, you, you all have that information. Unfortunately, we don't have that same data around camps that aren't regulated or aren't sanctioned. I don't think this goes far enough. I think it's gonna help a very small group of people who deserve and need help, but it's gonna lead out, leave out the vast majority of the city of Portland who's asking for help from you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Tim McCormick, Gil Williams and Fiona Burgess.
Hi, um, give me a thumbs up if you can confirm that you're hearing me. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Tim McCormick. I'm the founder of PDAT Shelter Forum. It's the largest houseless-led and houseless-centered advocacy organization in Portland with 350 members, creating public forums and an active online forum. I'm also lead organizer of the Village Collaborative, National Advocacy Network of Square One Villages Eugene, which developed the Emerald Village shown in the slide earlier by Commissioner Dan Ryan. That's the national network of over 2,000, 2,000 members working on projects in dozens of cities. I'm also presently houseless after being forced out of my always tenuous housing in Portland 10 days ago. I am currently living out of my car in Northern California in the nearest place I felt safe to go to after I was forced abruptly out of my housing. I'm talking to you from there. I want to note that contrary to the presentation of Dan, Commissioner Ryan, there has been no engagement at all from the Streets to Stability Group or from any commissioner with our group or me over the last year, despite extensive continual efforts by us to invite all of you to all, any, all of our public forums to join our online forum and our extensive public written and spoken testimony. Also, contrary to the notion of there being this broad consensus, I fundamentally question key points in what has been presented. And this is based on 10 years of my light-lived experience without formal housing. In particular, what's presented is a plan specifically focused on chronic homeless of two, multi-year tenure. The vast majority of houseless are like me, not like that. From my perspective, it's obvious that what we need is a far larger scale provision of very low cost, low barrier permanent housing. And I have spent the last three years with collaborators developing a series of very thoroughly worked out proposals for such large-scale housing for, with Meyer Trust, with the Village Collaborative and Village Coalition. And after three years, I'd like to say that there's one person in Portland that has responded or discussed it with me. Thank you, Sarah Iannarone, for that. I have not been able to get any response from any other person in Portland. So at this point, I honestly don't know if I will come back to Portland. I was born and grew up in Portland, graduated Portland Public Schools. I've lived here for on and off over 50, nearly 50 years. At this point, I honestly don't see that there is a place for me to go right now to live. And I don't know that I can continue trying to do what I'm doing when I don't hear, find that there are ears hearing what I'm trying to do. There are a lot of other places with similar crises and I'm finding a lot of other places potentially can use my expertise and experience. So again, I want to urge, I have put on the table detailed, concrete proposals uh, under the name New Starter Homes for the scale of tens of thousands of homes that we need. And it has essentially just hit a brick wall for three years to even discuss it with anyone in Portland. But thank you for your time and, um, thank you for all the people presenting. Bye.
Next up, we have Gil Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, uh, councillor, councillors. I am, my name's Gil Williams. I am a resident in Laurelhurst. I, well, want to applaud Commissioner Ryan and Mark Bond for this effort. I however, do not support its passage today because I think it falls way short of addressing a comprehensive approach to houselessness. Specifically, item 11, while housing is ultimately the solution, I think that is, um, as the mayor mentioned earlier, Commissioner Kupore's efforts in providing extended and a, and better services, I think, is critical to this solution. And it, and there's no worded wording in here to address that. And I think it needs to address more than just housing. I think provision of services is critical to any success in getting people out of tents and into homes. Secondly, there's language in here that provide teeth to this that is, that are rarely used. And if you are given the opportunity to deny some of the content like livable neighborhoods or, um, public safety, um, then I think if you don't like the optics of certain situations and you can ignore it, there, there is no accountability on, um, on, on the part of council. So I think it's very important that there are metrics associated with this that let us know the process that's, that's, that's being made. Because right now, this is just another bandage and while a good one, I think there needs to be metrics associated with this. It's, it's unless you're going to, um, it's, it, address this holistically, it's not an either or proposition, it's an and. So we have to look at all aspects of this. And, um, as, as a resident and, and a house resident, I am, I, you know, I obviously have my concerns, but I also am empathetic and can, and understand it's a global crisis and we need to address it. And so I think that it's, but we have to address all sides of this. And, um, you know, I want, as many have stated here today, to get back to, um, the Portland we all know and love. Thank you.
Next up, we have Fiona Burgess.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you, Fiona.
Hello there. Uh, my name is Fiona Burgess. I'm a lifelong Portland resident currently living in Southwest, doing everything I can to aid my houseless neighbors. Let's cut through the chase. Um, the establishment of these safe rest villages is defined in this document is contingent on ensuring that unsanctioned camps remain under fire, removing their right to personal autonomy and bypassing any negotiations by relying on vague definition of impact on livability to justify the systematized endangerment of our most vulnerable population. The authors of this ordinance would have you believe that the definitions laid out in, uh, directives C D and E are part of a harm reduction measure to avoid the removal of, uh, low-impact camps, quote unquote. But where exactly are the low-impact camps that it defines? If such a camp cannot be located too close to a school, a daycare, a park, a residence, a business or a hazardous area, you know, like those piles of boulders the city has been placing around, what does that leave? It leaves so-called service-resistant houseless people who don't fit neatly into the city's plans with no option but to cut themselves off from resources and community or to risk being violently displaced. This ordinance is simply a rationalization for expediting current camp removal practices, which other testifiers have already spoken about in gruesome detail. If we really want to reduce the impact of a camp, how about some quality of life improvements that benefit both campers and their neighbors? Does a nonprofit like Central City Concern really have the capacity to provide trash pickup and sanitation services when they're stretched thin with more typical case management? Are outreach workers from Joss really doing all they can to meet people where they're at to provide basic needs like healthcare access so people can pursue housing without constantly navigating threats to their well-being? Or are they content with just sitting in their downtown office, waiting for people to trek across town in 112-degree weather to pick up some water bottles? You have our taxpayer money. Use that to do something that rivals the grouse, grouse roots outreach efforts we see in the streets. Or better yet, invest in accessible housing for everyone. Thank you.
Next up, we have Vivian Lyon, Benjamin Dunlin and Bernard Day Niva Day.
Good afternoon, just fairly afternoon, Commissioner, um, council members. My name is Vivian Lyon. I'm an attorney representing kind of some Portland and surrounding areas. I'm going to echo what other people have already identified, uh, as an issue with this ordinance, which is that there are too many areas, um, of unclarity that appear to allow for discretionary sweeps, possibly at an increased rate than previously implemented, uh, which of course is a humanitarian disaster. The language to which I'm referring in the ordinance is in sections, uh, C and D regarding low impact and high impact, defined by the standard operating procedures of the Impact Reduction Program. Uh, these, you know, I, I do understand that the, the ordinance is more than these bullet points. However, I want to identify some areas within these bullet points, uh, that I think could be problematic, uh, for the communities. Considering the impact on residents of being identified as a high-impact encampment, I, I would like to see, uh, what evidence, for instance, there is to suggest that uncontained debris, uh, which is very, a charismatic element that is used against unhoused people as a reason for the sweeps. How, how do we know that that is the fault of the residents of the encampment? It could be the fault of third-party city contractors that failed to remove the debris in a timely fashion or underfunding of those contractors so that they are bound to fail and leave garbage everywhere. The ordinance also needs to define hazardous materials and define the, the harm, quote unquote, posed by conspicuous drug use or evidence of paraphernalia other than syringes. As we know, unhoused people who struggle with addictions have frequently come by those addictions after becoming unhoused, not prior. Let's not throw vulnerable people under the bus via imposing the category high impact on them based on their attempts to cope with the. Egotimatize and target people based on their mental health issues that they're attempting to treat with easily available drugs when they don't have health insurance and they can't get prescription drugs. Moreover, I would like the ordinance to define verified reports. We know that NIMBYs often report crime based on a person's appearance, shabby clothes, skin color, or visibly undate. These are racist and classist issues, not criminal issues. I submit that more is needed than reports of possible violence or criminal activity to earn a high-impact rating. And what makes size of camp relevant? The increased size of camps reflects the lack of affordable housing in this city due to deliberate choices made by people sitting on city council right now. Unhoused people are safer in larger numbers. Size of camp appears to punish the houseless for the success of a given camp in providing community and safety. Finally, what metric is going to be used to determine how many other attempts to reduce impacts need to be implemented before a sweep is ordered? Is there any opportunity for a camp to appeal a high-impact designation? In what ways is City Council dedicated to actually treating unhoused folks as citizens of this city? I would support this ordinance if it didn't contain so many loopholes that can be easily exploited to increase the frequency of inhumane sweeps, not lessen them. If your poetic communitarian language reflects the actual intentions behind this ordinance, then the text needs to be fine-tuned to eliminate these loopholes and also include guarantees of stakeholder inclusion.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're, you're at 3:30 now. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, uh, it is critical that the ordinance include guarantees of stakeholder inclusion and determinations of high-impact camps, by which I mean camp residents must be included in those determinations. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Benjamin Dunlin.
Hello, Mayor Wheeler and Council. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here today. I, uh, I just want to thank all of the commissioners' offices for getting together, working collaboratively on a project around homelessness. I know that would not be easy, uh, but I'm, I'm happy it's happening. I'm pretty sure y'all are familiar with my opinions on enforcement, given that I'm part of the Stop the Sweeps Coalition. But so I will skip over that. Instead, I'm interested in learning about more details about the safe rest villages themselves. And so perhaps these are directed more at Mark Bond, uh, than anyone else. But, uh, if there's future conversations, I would love to be a part of them. So a few years back, probably about seven years ago, Sarah Rankin at the Seattle University and the Homeless Research Advocacy Project, uh, they developed models around safe rest parking and safe rest villages, uh, that is very similar to this model here. So I hope that she was, uh, able to be used as a foundation. If not, I can refer you to her and, uh, provide some of her, uh, academic papers that she has put out over the last five, six years. So one of the questions about the villages and, uh, let me back up. Sorry, my brain's melted. Helped deliver with defense fund about seven, eight thousand pounds of ice and water over the week. So I'm, I'm a little rambly. Yeah, so, uh, I do, I want to support this, right? The idea of the safe rest villages, but there's not enough information, right? There needs to be more information before any level of support can happen. So some of the questions I have are like, what are the sides of the villages, right? Are the services mandatory? There's a lot of problems that we have or I have with transitional and affordable housing units. For example, they have the highest eviction rates over the last year. Um, I highly suggest you look at that data from the Joint Office or from TPI and Central City Concern. There are thresholds that are too hard to make, creating what people turn as service-resistant or as I call them service fatigue folk. What are the streams? What are the streams of revenue for continual funding of these, right? Might I suggest that we look into the P-Box parking meter revenue program that is going into funding for the ESDs or the ESDs taking, you know, maybe paying 20% of their revenue into these villages across the city. What are there some models of self-sustainability? For example, Dignity Villages uses micro financial business models like cutting firewood, right? Giving people employment opportunities on the small end. What is the level of autonomy? Are there going to be councils involved? What is the level of democracy that will be wrapped around this, right? Will the villagers have their own say about policies and procedures for every individual site, right? So these are the kind of questions that I have. I can come up a lot more. But I'm interested in knowing more about the safe rest villages because I do think that is an absolutely critical thing in the city, right? And then I just wanted to thank Commissioner Hardisty and Commissioner Rubio, as well as the other offices that have been supportive in downsizing or rightsizing at Lowerhurst Park. We partnered with Rapid Response. We partnered with the Fire Department. We've partnered with the navigation teams in order to slowly get people out. There's even good outcomes. There's people that have been going to detox. We've been picking up trash three days out of the week. And we hope to partner with other nonprofits and city entities over the next few months, right? Until we can find the appropriate.
You're now, you're now a minute and a half over. I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm really sorry, folks. There is some forbearance here, but I'm sorry, I have to keep jumping in.
Mayor, I just want to thank Benjamin for that testimony and also he met with the Streets to Stability Task Force and was appointed contact with the folks that are at Lowerhurst Park. So we look forward to engaging with you further and we'll keep you close. Very insightful testimony. Thank you.
Thanks. Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Kealan, how many more folks are signed up?
We have one more person, Mayor.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Bernard Day Niva Day.
It's okay. No one ever says my name right. I'm an actual homeless person. I hear you guys throw around all these terms, many of which are frankly pretty insulting. I hear where I live, we've already built a place that has all the things you're talking about with these villages that you want to concentrate people into. We have toilets that we created using the same chemicals in porta potties. Because when I sent an email to the city and asked for a porta potty, I was told that the nearest one was 30 minutes and I should walk to it. Sorry. So I've never had anyone contact me and ask me any questions. We've been pretty out there. We've sent emails to the city. I know some of you got my email the other day when it was 116 degrees. And the day before, the city came and blocked the road to my camp so that we couldn't get water here anymore. I know Ted, you didn't even open the email, but Ms. Hardisty and she did. So that was a little problematic for us. I don't understand why you guys want to kill us. I don't understand why you listen to these classist people like the Laurelhurst Neighborhood Association, whom I have screenshots of their neighborhood account and it's pretty disgusting. Like, so I'd just like you to start asking the homeless people what we think. And we can show you a place that we've already built that's sanitary and safe. But I'm sure that that's not going to matter because now I've told you and Ted's going to do what he does and he's going to come shoot fucking tear gas at us. So have a nice day.
All right. And just a reminder to everybody for our future items, this is family television. We have a license from the FCC. Do not drop the F-bomb or you put at risk the ability for anybody to be able to testify and to hear this council session. So please, in the future, I know people are passionate on this issue. Let's please limit the F-bombs. With that, colleagues, questions, comments? So this is a Commissioner Hardisty, I apologize. Go ahead.
No worry, Mayor. My apologies. I hit my button late. At first, I want to really appreciate all the people who testified today. I mean, clearly, this is a deeply felt issue. And clearly, we're going to not have everything figured out before we vote on this measure. So what I just wanted to start with was clearly, this is a community effort and it will take us, the community, to make it work. And as I said earlier, there's no one policy that's going to fix what's broken. And I look forward to working with Commissioner Ryan to really address some of the concerns that we heard today. I know that this is a living, breathing document. And what I am hopeful for as we consider this vote is that Commissioner Ryan, that you could lay out for us a timeline whereby we're going to get updates and we're going to be able to make changes based on what we learn in real time. I am 100% in support of the vision that you've laid out. I want to be clear about that. But I also don't want to ignore some of the real fear that I hear that is being generated by this ordinance. And but we have to do both. We have to actually move this ordinance forward and we have to make sure that we're addressing a fear that community members are expressing today. So I'm looking forward to us continuing to make this better and to continue to be responsive to some of what we heard today. Some of what we heard, I know is fear-based because it's fear-based on the unknown. It's based on what isn't written in the ordinance and what people are reading into it. And so what I also know is that we can't tell people what we're going to do. We have to actually do it. And as people start seeing us roll out this vision, I am confident that most community members will see just what you're trying to put forward, Commissioner Ryan, which is a vision of options, a multitude of options for people who today have very few options. We have a housing crisis because it costs too darn much to live in the city of Portland. And if you're not making $24 an hour today, you are a house burden. And that is the issue that we are attempting to intentionally address. So I just I hear the pain today from housed and unhoused community members. And I just don't want to give people the impression that the vote today will fix it all. But it's the beginning of us working cooperatively in coordination to address the most critical issues that we're facing today on our streets. So that's why I am, after listening to the testimony, after really reading the ordinance and honestly, and really trying to find some of the pieces that people were most concerned about. And I think we're not going to be able to address that until people see what we do, not what we say.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Just a reminder, this is a non-emergency ordinance and maybe somebody would offer an amendment at some point, but let's hear some other comments. Commissioner Maps?
First of all, I want to thank everyone for testifying today. I hear the concern about how this will ultimately come together. I also have worked very closely with Commissioner Ryan's office and every office here to get us to the point where we're at. And I hear the urgency and I think no matter where you fall on your feelings about this, I think one of the reasons why this conversation is so passionate is because there is an incredible urgency around this. And that's why I think I'd like to build on Mayor Wheeler's observation that this is a non-emergency ordinance. Actually, I think houselessness here in Portland is an emergency. I'd like to, I'd like to set Commissioner Ryan up and the city up so that we could begin this important work as soon as possible, which is why I'd like to offer an amendment to make this an emergency ordinance so that we can begin to work on these safe rest camps as soon as possible.
Commissioner Maps moves this as an emergency ordinance. I will second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, call the roll on the amendment.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hardisty?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. It's unanimous. It's now an emergency ordinance. We will be taking the vote today. Any further discussions on the main motion as amended? Please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes, thank you. Before I dive in, I want to, I want to thank each person on this council. The most meaningful conversations I've had in my time in office have been with my colleagues about our shared vision to address houselessness. And I am so grateful for the collaboration and focus. I know we'll continue to have the weekly meetings with among staff and we'll continue to have top-of-line dialogue like we were doing today and other times we've been. I also want to thank Chair Kefory and the Open Government Commissioners for being committed partners in this effort. And thank you to the provider network that will make Portlanders experiencing houselessness safe. I will continue lifting you up as the true champions of this work initiative as we move it forward. And I want to thank my entire staff and I want to especially thank my policy director, Mark Bond. Mark is the architect of this ordinance and he facilitates the weekly all council office Streets to Stability Task Force, where we break down city silos one meeting at a time. Mark guides these meetings with a perfect blend of heart and head and an exquisite balance of patience and persistence. So thank you, Mark. I also want to thank the public and definitely to everyone who testified today. I'm listening. I hear you and I want you to know that I've been reflecting on everything you said. Today's action is not enough for some of you. You're upset. You have every right to be. The houselessness crisis impacts every Portlander. Please know that any one city of Portland ordinance will not fix the complex challenge of houselessness. That affects every neighborhood in Portland as well as every city across the country. I hope you'll listen to me and reflect with me as I recap what this ordinance is and does. This ordinance means that we will build a vital and humane pathway of services for Portlanders experiencing houselessness and we will work together to address the unregulated, unwelcoming, unacceptable conditions that are currently on our streets. This ordinance means that we will build six safe rest villages in strategic, welcoming geographic locations across Portland as we include the community before the end of the year. This ordinance means that we will pivot from current unregulated camping and create communities where Portlanders can live in dignity with no harm to the environment and with access to safety, hygiene, sanitation, and human connection. And finally, this ordinance means that many land-owning city bureaus will work together to manage our assets for the benefit of Portlanders. We have two choices today. We can choose to be passive, be Portland nice and delay this action, or we can humbly roll up our sleeves and start building a solution together. This isn't a time for politicians to look good. It's time for us to acknowledge mistakes, roll up, roll with the punches and get back up and build. It's time, it's time for us to look good. I may not look good, but be good. I love my beautiful River City hometown. And for one, well, and for one, I can't wait. I'm ready to build with all of you. Thank you again to everyone who worked to make this ordinance come together today, including our dedicated community partners. I promise you that we will act to protect our neighbors experiencing houselessness. Continue coming together to spend our federal investment dollars wisely and make our community safer. Here we are and here we go. I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Point of order legal counsel, Naomi.
Hi, and I apologize because it might require a little revoting. I just wanted to clarify, Commissioner, with Commissioner Maps, the amendment. So right now, section two of the ordinance has the ordinance going into effect on September 30th, 2021. So I just want to clarify the intent of the amendment, adding the emergency clauses to remove section two, add the emergency for the reasons that you stated and to have it become effective immediately.
That is correct.
And just for that purpose, and I apologize, but can we just re-vote on the amendment so that that's clear?
Sure. Do we need a motion or anything, or is it?
No, the, I assume, Commissioner, that your motion still stands. My second still stands. We'll interrupt the vote for a moment on the main motion. Kealan, can you go back to the amendment? Recall the vote on the amendment, please.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hardisty? Maps?
Aye.
Rubio? Wheeler?
Thank you, Naomi. I vote aye. The amendment's on the table. You may resume the roll on the main motion as amended.
Hardisty?
First, I want to start off by thanking the entire council for working together to bring something that I can honestly say isn't the whole package that any of us wanted. But that's what compromise is about. That's what good governmental deliberations look like. What we heard from the public today was a lot about how these processes have worked in the past and and people's fear about what could happen if we are not intentional about making sure that we are implementing this policy in the most humane, people-centric way possible and that we are holding each other and the county accountable for the outcomes that we seek to obtain. We have a long road. We have, from 16 months ago when this pandemic began, we knew that the houseless population would expand. We luckily have not experienced the eviction moratorium being lifted as of yet. But tomorrow, that happens with some caveats for people who are fortunate enough to know how to actually get that extended for another 60 days. We are in for a hard ride. And this will be, some of these will work fabulously. But here's what I hope. I hope this vote today signals a new day in the Portland metro area where we will stop pointing fingers and we will stop holding other people accountable for our failures and that we will collectively, as individuals, as service providers, as elected leaders, all decide that each of us have a role in addressing the current humanitarian crisis on our street. And each of us have an obligation to do our part to make sure that we are not making people's lives harder who are already suffering on our streets. Is this ordinance everything I wanted? No. Do I trust my colleagues that we can make it better? Yes. Do I believe that each of us are committed to doing the best work we can based on the limited resources that we have? Yes. Will I be holding Commissioner Ryan and Mark Bond and all the rest of my colleagues accountable for making sure that we're living up to who we think we are? No question. But I will say today, I am proud of this vote. I am proud of this vote because what it signals is that excuses are no longer acceptable. Since day one of this pandemic, we have seen Portlanders in every corner of this city step up in humanitarian ways that I have never seen in my entire lifetime. This is not the time to move your foot off the pedal. In fact, now's the time to go full speed, full speed ahead to make sure that our most vulnerable community members can expect to be treated with dignity and with a path towards housing they actually can afford to live in. I am happy to vote aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
I want to thank Commissioner Ryan and his team and specifically Mark Bond for living and breathing this work and working closely with all of our offices on this matter and really ensuring that we were included in the development. I also greatly appreciate the testimony today and the uncertainty expressed. Your questions challenge us to continuously do better and to ask better questions of our work and of ourselves. This policy to me represents a lot of thoughtful work and long hours of critical conversations to arrive here. And I want to appreciate my colleague, Commissioner Ryan, for his leadership. And I also want to reiterate that this policy's aim is to provide more compassionate options, to provide dignity and safety to the unhoused community, not to displace or disempower people. And I believe this ordinance does not do that. Otherwise, we would not be in support of it. And what it is, is an important step forward in compassion and coordination. And what it is, is an important step forward in compassion and coordination, um, and also ultimately a path to self-sufficiency while ensuring people are supported and treated with the dignity that they deserve as our neighbors, family members, and friends. The city has a responsibility when intervening to provide assistance, to provide health and sanitary services, and provide houseless Portlanders with alternative shelters, and I'm hopeful at this step today. And it's also an important, um, moment that because this ordinance is viewed as a call to action for all of us on council, and this will require, as my colleagues have talked about, that we show up and that we're in alignment and that we set up the right systems for support when we do inclusive intervention with community at the center. We need to continue partnering with the county and the state and the private sector to create more housing options and spaces that are adequate for all lived experiences. And we also must continue to innovate, to find new and more ways to support those experiencing homelessness while we get these other support mechanisms and infrastructure up and running. And there's no one magic solution to these challenges because it's been, this, these challenges have been decades in the making. And like my colleague Commissioner Hardisty said, this is one important piece, but there are so many other pieces that are just as important that we, that we, this is just the beginning, that we need to continue on. And the fact of it is, we need everything to be in play right now, and none of these things works alone to its maximum effectiveness unless they're all working effectively in concert, um, with all of us at the table, both public and private. So again, I'm grateful that Commissioner Ryan has taken leadership of this continuum, and I look forward to continuing to work closely with him and his team to meet the expectations that our community has set for us. And finally, I want to thank Chair Kefory as well. I want to thank Kaya Sand from Street Roots, Benjamin Donlin, who testified earlier, and Becky from Oregon Law Center for the questions, for the ongoing conversation and critical feedback with our offices while holding community at the center. These have all ensured the development of a, a much better policy. So thank you, everyone. I proudly vote aye.
Mayor, before I call on you to vote, may I ask Commissioner Ryan to vote one more time on the ordinance as amended since we made that correction?
Sure. I won't reread my remarks, but I proudly vote aye.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mayor Wheeler.
Well, that's not fair. He got a chance to practice. He did that with such style the second time. Uh, thank you for that, Commissioner Ryan, and, and thank you to you, Commissioner Ryan, and your team for shepherding this through. You've done a great job as our housing commissioner and our liaison to the joint office. And this, I think, is a very important first step. I have something of a unique perspective on this as the mayor because I hear two messages loudly and clearly from the community at large. On one hand, what I'm hearing from the community, and I hear this many, many times a day, is that the proliferation of some homeless camps is creating significant public safety, public health, and environmental impacts on the community. I hear that all day long, and we have a duty to respond to those public safety, public health, and environmental impacts. And we are. But what I also hear loudly and clearly, often from the very same people who express their frustration around some of the health, safety, and environmental impacts, I also hear from them loudly and clearly that they expect us to be compassionate, that they expect us to have solutions to help people get into housing or get into whatever services they need to be successful in housing. What I hear from them is they expect us to provide a suite of services that are compassionate, responsive to the needs of vulnerable people who are living on our streets. And then there's a lot of disagreement in between. And as Commissioner Rubio stated, I thought very eloquently, uh, this crisis, it is relatively new in the history of Portland, at least at this scale and in terms of the complexity of the needs of people currently living on our streets. And we are in the process of reshaping the way we respond to the homeless crisis in this community. I want to thank everybody who testified today and just mention briefly that the impact reduction team has implemented many of the suggestions that people had identified. Uh, over the last fifteen months, the, the IRT placed over one hundred hygiene stations across the city. They worked with outreach teams to connect hundreds of people with shelter and housing placement services. Uh, they facilitated the opening of three new outdoor emergency shelters. The impact reduction team has also adapted their operating procedures to our evolving understanding about the public health issues surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic. This ordinance, uh, you know, does something that may not sound very sexy, but I think it's critically important as the next step in our compassionate approach to reducing homelessness in our community, and that is it clarifies roles within the city and affirms the authority of the impact reduction team to do their work, both in terms of the kinds of humane services that I just mentioned and where necessary to work on remediation as well in partnership with social service providers and others in a compassionate way. And so I, uh, am happy to support this as a first step. I want to acknowledge that it is just that. It is a first step. I think we, we heard today, uh, that there were some people who were disappointed that there wasn't more specificity and clarification on where people cannot camp, where it is not appropriate to camp. We heard from some other folks say it's not going far enough in terms of its compassionate approach. Uh, and to that, I just want to say to folks, um, this first step may not seem monumental, but it is. It, it, it lays a very important foundation for how the city conducts this work, who conducts this work, and what the basic expectations of that work will be. And in my conversations with Commissioner Ryan and his team, I'm well aware that this is a first step that as these safe campsites, uh, become a reality, and this, this council is, is supporting funding for it, we are supporting the infrastructure and the work for it. Uh, we are working in a collaborative manner with our colleagues at Northern County to help lay the foundation for these on a longer term basis. As, as that becomes more clear, where the humane alternatives are, that will also give us the opportunity to do more, uh, in terms of, uh, reducing the conflicts that we see in the community with the house and the unhoused populations in Portland. So, uh, thank you again, Commissioner Ryan. I vote aye. The ordinance is approved as amended. And colleagues, at this point, um, we will take a, uh, a humanitarian break. We'll take a five-minute break. Commissioner Hardisty, I am excused. Actually, I was excused fifty minutes ago.
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, if I may, uh, uh, my question is, how many agenda items do we have left? And?
Currently, what is remaining on the docket is one, two, three second readings, which I expect would go pretty quickly. And then there is, uh, your two items from the Bureau of Transportation. Uh, both were estimated at ten minutes each. And then Commissioner Maps has a, uh, grant agreement ordinance, and Commissioner Rubio has a, a competitive solicitation ordinance for the Parks Bureau, so, um.
So I support taking a ten-minute break. I think we may get through a lot of that, uh, within a few minutes of coming back, and then we'll make a decision about whether to change, uh, to shift it to the afternoon agenda.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that's a realistic expectation. None of these look like they're, they're hugely time-consuming items. Uh, they look pretty technical just at, at first glance. Um, and so we will take a ten-minute recess, and when we come back, uh, Council President Hardisty, in her last official act as Council President, will preside over the after, or will preside over the rest of the session. So thank you all. We are in recess.
Thanks, Mayor. Enjoy the afternoon.
Thank you.
Before we are officially, our ten minutes will officially be up.
I'm here. I just, uh, will have the camera on for a couple of minutes.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for letting me know. Well, if Kealan is back, then I say let's, uh, stop recording and?
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Kealan. What is our next agenda item? Kealan, would you please read, read it for us?
Thank you, Madam President. Number five twenty. Temporarily modify or waive portions of city code titles, original art murals, signs, and related regulations in planning and zoning to assist businesses, organizations, and entrepreneurs to adjust and continue operations during and through the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. This is a second reading. Um, Commissioner Ryan, um, do you want to add anything to this conversation? Commissioner Ryan, you are muted if you?
I had to turn on both of them. I, um, I don't know. I, I, I'm confused on where we are on this. I know it's the second reading, but it feels like the third for good reason. We missed you last week, Commissioner Rubio. So I know Commissioner Maps and Commissioner Rubio were having dialogue about what item. Was that true?
That is correct, and I, um.
Should we dive into that?
Yes, there may be an amendment moving forward, which I, I just wanted to stop. Uh, let me, uh, just so that everybody, uh, is on the same page, uh, when we had the first, uh, reading, uh, we spoke a bit about the art murals. There's something I knew Commissioner Rubio would have some concerns about as we were talking about, uh, uh, setting timelines for removing, uh, those artist redentions. And so, uh, Commissioner Rubio, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, thank you. Um, just to, uh, give you some context, um, RAC has currently been working to catalog artwork on boarded up windows and storefronts to identify artists. And I, I apologize I was not here to, to be useful and helpful in that conversation. And to ensure the respectful, uh, removal and preservation of the artwork were feasible, we want to make sure that RAC has enough time to continue and finish this work that they've already started and for the necessary coordination with businesses, artists, galleries, and any other relevant parties. And I really appreciate, um, that BDS has had this recognition and wanted to provide a generous amount of time for this respectful removal. Um, and I also understand and appreciate Commissioner Maps' intention of alignment behind the changing of the timeline for the murals to align with the emergency declaration ending. And since, um, since last week, uh, we've learned that this new knowledge that the declaration is ending September thirtieth, which is just shy of the time I think that we need. So we're, uh, I would, I would like to introduce, um, an amendment, uh, to keep the, this in place, um, uh, so that, that, uh, until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And I'm happy to say that in whatever format, um, I need to. But our, uh, Commissioner Maps and I have been, uh, our teams have been working together on this.
I'll second that amendment.
All right. I'm speaking on, uh, apparently when you become president, you also speak on mute as well. Um, Commissioner Maps, uh, do you see this as a friendly amendment?
Uh, yes, so I view it as a friendly amendment. Uh, I'm happy to, to work with Commissioner Rubio on this and Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, Lindley, I want to make sure that I am legal and squeaky. Uh, does this amendment require us to vote on this amendment as presented by Commissioner Rubio?
So, um, Commissioner, or Madam President, um, I am, I can jump in, or Naomi can, because she's council attorney for the morning session. But I think what we need to do is make sure it's really clear which portions of the ordinance are being changed, what date. So I think it's maybe Directive J and maybe the finding related to that. But yes, you should vote on the amendment today, and then because it's not an emergency at this point, it needs to go to another reading. So Naomi, anything else?
That is exactly where I was too.
Excellent. And so, uh, Commissioner Rubio has made a motion to amend, um, uh, the section, um, uh, let me find the appropriate section, uh, that we are amending. Um, I believe that this is, uh, uh, paragraph fourteen, title thirty-two. Um, I will ask Rebecca, I'll ask Director, uh, to step in and, and help me make sure that we are legal.
I have the language too, if you'd like me to.
Please, that may be helpful, Commissioner Rubio. Why don't you read the language that you are changing?
Okay, I would like to introduce an amendment to Directive J related to how long murals can maintain, re- remain in place without a permit or adjustments as follows. Wave PCC thirty-three point one thirty point two thirty point A point three and B point three, comma, thirty-three point four one five point three forty and thirty-three point five one zero point two two zero point B to allow murals to remain in place without a permit or adjustment until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
And, uh, Commissioner Maps, you second that amendment?
I sure do. Uh, second.
And Commissioner Hardisty, I just add that Matt and Rebecca were nodding and doing thumbs up, but.
Yeah, I was, I was. I was too, because please don't leave it to me to try to figure out where we're going to put the amendment. Uh, thank you so much, Commissioner Rubio. Kealan, would you call the roll on the amendment?
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
And Commissioner, uh, uh, Ryan, I, uh, the director in regard to, uh, the amendments that we spoke about last week, um, as you know, I had some concerns about, um, the, uh, the exemptions and actually the, 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 um, the amount of money, um, that actually would trigger exemptions from regulations. Um, and, uh, since we are not going to be voting on this today, and it will come back once again, this is, it's going to be one of your, uh, ongoing second readings, Commissioner, uh, Ryan. Um, I would really like to, if it's okay with you, um, have Rebecca, uh, have, uh, um, your director, uh, Esar actually talk about some of the amendments that her and I, I thought actually would make it better because it would actually address the issues I have. Um, and it's solely up to you whether you want to accept them or not, but I'd love to have it on the public record that these were some changes that we discussed that could, um, uh, earn my support, uh, for this particular ordinance. Uh, is that okay?
Absolutely. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I heard that you were working directly with Director Esar. I think that's great. So, Director Esar, you'll explain the amendments? Is that what I just heard? Okay.
Thank you, Director. And let me just say, thank you so much for making yourself available and really hearing, uh, the concerns that I had articulated, uh, the first couple of times we talked about this, uh, this particular ordinance. Um, and please.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. And, um, yeah, I was through, this is Rebecca Eus. I'm the director of the Bureau of Development Services. And, um, in conversation, uh, with Commissioner Hardisty's staff and looking at ways to narrow the scope of which types of projects would be potentially eligible for a temporary waiver of non-conforming upgrades. Um, Commissioner Hardisty was interested in, in reducing that scope to projects that really, really need that help to get back up and running, uh, and not, um, if I could, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in characterizing your interest, uh, as I understand it, uh, not having that benefits spread as broadly or casting as wide a net as we had proposed in the original ordinance. And, uh, so one of those ideas was to limit it to just projects that include a community service use. Uh, and in the zoning code, community service uses are defined as things like shelters, um, as well as drug and alcohol centers, vocational training, uh, for persons with disable, disabling conditions, charitable meal service or food distribution centers, that type of thing, uh, that benefit the community. Uh, one of the examples we raised was the shelter over at the Rite Aid on North Denver that would have ninety to one hundred beds proposed. The project valuation is five million, uh, which means that they'd need to spend five hundred thousand dollars on non-conforming upgrades at their site. Uh, money that many of you, I think, would agree could be better spent elsewhere. Um, so. money that many of you, I think, would agree could be better spent elsewhere. So, that was one category we were talking about including in that temporary exemption from non-conforming upgrade requirements in the zoning code. Another one was daycare uses. Those are clearly defined in the zoning code, so it would be relatively easy to implement and administer which projects include those. Another category would be development with affordable housing units, giving them that additional break on having to do non-conforming upgrades so that their projects would be more financially feasible. And the last category was retail projects, including one or more retail sales and service uses with a project valuation of $500,000 or less. So, it really restricts it to those smaller-scale retail projects to try to help those small businesses. So, that's, that is the menu of ideas that I laid out for Commissioner Hardesty in an email earlier, as she was wanting to explore ways to limit the scope of which projects would benefit from non-conforming upgrades.
Thank you, Director Esar. You did an excellent job of articulating both the vision and some solutions that I thought were really going to be helpful to this project. Questions?
Yeah, I'm thinking out loud with you, which is really great to do in a meeting. And I mean that. I, I can get behind the exceptions when we're talking about the low-income housing, like for the shelter example, the Director Esar did. The 500K limit is where I'm, I'm not, I'm not there on that. But I was there until that. So, it was presented like a menu, and I was check, check, check. And then I, when I got to that one, it was too low for me. I think there's a lot of small and medium-sized businesses that would be, would benefit from this if it, if it was higher. So, that's where I'm at at the moment.
Where would you want to go?
Oh, boy. You know, as you can imagine, I was kind of focused on another ordinance.
One or two other things on your mind this morning? And I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, I think what would be good is if we kept doing dialogue on that.
I don't want to delay.
I'd rather get this right than say something I regret in the dais at the moment.
Perfectly fine. I, what I did want to do is delay you another week. I think you've been very generous in allowing both Commissioner Rubio's interests to be addressed.
Yeah.
You're being very generous today by allowing another bite at the apple to, to, again, to ensure that, you know, you, you have the full council's support. And again, I absolutely support the vision. I'm just very concerned about how it be, would be implemented, and who the true beneficiaries would be.
Yeah.
When you give these exemptions out. So, on that note, I am happy to follow your direction. Today, it will be held over for a second hearing, reading next week, if nothing changes from what we've done today. So, what is your wish, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, now that I know second readings can be dot, 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 I'm, I'm good with delaying. And I'm supposed to be out next week, so I might call in if, if that's where we are, or it might need to be the week after. So.
Well, Commissioner Ryan.
But I'd rather, I'd rather land this right than rush it at the moment, so.
Well, again, I greatly appreciate the patience and the deliberative effort that we've taken. Director Esar, you've been pretty phenomenal. I'm greatly appreciative. Thank you, Matt, also. Who knew you had to show up so many times for this in front of the City Council? But in my opinion, it's going to be better. It gets better every time we talk about it. It gets more intentional every time we talk about it. And so, I just want to thank you, Commissioner Ryan. So, in that case, it will be, so, let me ask actually Lindley. I want to make sure that we're not unduly delaying this. Lindley, you've been following our conversation. Commissioner Ryan is okay with delaying it for another second reading, but we've also heard that he may not be available for the next vote. My intention is to work with Director Esar to come up with an amendment that Commissioner Ryan can support, so that when it comes back to the council, it will be ready and for, for action. So, does that mean I should set it over for a second hearing? And if it doesn't come back next week, that would be okay? Or should I, what would you recommend I do?
So, you need to set it over, and the question is, next week or two weeks, if it is clear, Commissioner Ryan, that you don't want to be available next week. It sure sounds like you ought to set it over two weeks. But if the desire is to maybe get your amendments, President, on the books next week, and you think you all can get it done by then, you could leave it for next week. The easiest option may be simply to say, set it over for next week. If Commissioner Ryan's not available, amendments aren't ready, you just set it over again. And that would be fine, too.
Thank you very much. It's always great to.
I love adaptable attorneys. That was awesome.
And, and getting clear advice is always a good thing.
Yes, yes.
So, we will set this agenda item over until next week, and next week, and we will continue to work with Director Esar on amendments. And if Commissioner Ryan is not available next week, we will just set it over for an additional week. Thank you all. Really great work on this effort, and look forward to it coming back. Kealan, what is our next item?
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to quickly clarify before we move on from this item. Is this item being continued, or are we, are we passing it to second reading again? I just want to make sure we're capturing the disposition correctly.
We are continuing the item, because we anticipate we may have an amendment when it comes back in front of this body.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, 521, amend Title 17 Public Improvements Code to Align With Changes to the Residential Info Project.
Thank you very much. Give me just a sec, please. Which number was that? I'm sorry, Kealan?
521.
Going up and down my thing today. And this one, of course, is me. And I am, I believe I still have a person from Transportation. And actually, this is just making an amendment so that Title 17 Public Improvement Codes is in alignment with the Residential Info Project that we spent years of our life bringing to the City Council. I have Ann Hill here from PBOT, if you have any questions on this issue. Not seeing any questions. Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this issue?
No one signed up for this item.
It is not an emergency issue. It will carry over to second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, or President, Madam President. It looks like this is an emergency.
Madam President, the reason that it's, this is Ann Hill from PBOT. The reason it's an emergency is so that it can be in effect by August 1st, so that it's in, in alignment with when RIP goes into effect.
Excellent. I, I missed a little star next to my agenda item. In that case, Kealan, would you call the role, please?
Ryan?
Yes, we're on 521. It does have a asterisk, and I vote aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Aye. 521 passes.
Thank you.
And, Kealan, before you call the next item, I just want my colleagues to know my plan is to have us out of here by 1:30, so that we at least have a half hour before our afternoon session begins. And anything that we don't get to between now and then, we will carry over to the end of our afternoon agenda. Is that okay with the body? I see him. Okay, thank you. Okay, Kealan.
Item 522, authorize the Bureau of Transportation to reallocate property rights between the city and the Oregon Department of Transportation for jointly owned property along Southwest Nato Parkway immediately north of I-405, and waive the requirements of disposition of city real property policy.
I really wish it wasn't so late in the day, colleagues. This is something that has been years in the making, and it will not get its due diligence because of this short timeline. But I am happy to introduce David McAldory from the Portland Bureau of Transportation to speak on this item. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I'll try to make this fast since we're in need of some extra time here. What we have, well, I'm David McAldowney. I'm the PBOT's Right-of-Way Acquisition Supervisor and Property Manager. And what I wanted to discuss with you today is a parcel of land that sits off of Nato Parkway immediately north of I-405. And I'm going to go ahead and share my presentation with you. Let me know when you can see that.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, I gotta hit the right button here.
There we go. Got it.
All right, we've got it. All right, let me, it's going here. Okay, so, the, the property in question is jointly owned by the Portland Bureau of Transportation, or the City of Portland, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. And what we're trying to do is to reallocate property rights on this jointly owned property. The city owns a 60% interest in it, and the state owns a 40% interest in it. And this action today will allow us to decouple those two interests and split the property into two pieces. The city has identified this area as a, or this property as a good location for a sanctioned camp to be located on. So, what we're trying to do is remove ODOT's interest from the portion that the city will have. What this will involve is two deeds, one from the city to ODOT for a southern portion by I-405, and one from ODOT to the city on the northern portion. Due to time constraints, we're asking council to waive the requirements of administrative rule 13.02, disposition of city real property. Typically, this is the easiest of all, all transactions to take through, a category-one transaction. But in order to get this done in time, we need those waived. I will point out that even though we're not going through that process, I did reach out to all three infrastructure bureaus and Bureau of Development Services in the spirit of that particular admin rule. Just a real quick view here. This is a general location, so you can see where the property sits in relation to the city. I'll give you a second there to get orientated to that. And then the next slide, this shows a portion of the property that will go to ODOT at the south end, and then the city will receive the north end of this property. And this is what we would use for the sanctioned camp. Just a real brief history. In 1941, the city and state acquired this property to be used for the Harbor Drive Expressway. And this particular segment was what was carrying the southbound traffic from the expressway onto Front Avenue, which is now Nato Parkway. And in the 1970s, the expressway was removed, and this land is set vacant since that time. You can take a quick look at this photo here. The ramp on the far left is the property in question. There was actually a tunnel that went under Harbor Drive there. It's now filled in. But the ramp came down and then led on to Nato, what is now Nato Parkway. The property is still fee-on right-of-way. It's not an actual parcel, per se, that could be developed right now. And so, what we're doing is we're reallocating this based on those 60-40 ownership interests, and we're trying to maintain the original platted lot lines. And the idea with that is by keeping the original lot lines after this particular use, if you wanted to develop this property for affordable housing, or some other project like that, it's going to make it a lot easier to work with BDS to do that. And then last slide here just gives you a look at what the division of the property would look like there, with the city having the northern portion and ODOT the southern portion. Okay, I will stop sharing now. And unless anyone has any questions, that's the end of my presentation.
Well, very well done, David. Any questions? Kealan, has anyone signed up on this item?
No one signed up for this item.
Okay, this item has an emergency clause, so, Kealan, call the role.
Ryan?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Excellent job, David. Thank you very much for that very excellent presentation. This has been a long time coming. I'm really pleased that we're finally able to have a clear line of separation between what ODOT owns and what the City of Portland owns. I vote aye. So, Kealan, it is 1:27 by my clock. Would you help me review what we have left on our agenda today? And I would like to make a motion to move those remaining items to the bottom of our afternoon agenda.
Yes, we have item 523, which it looks like wasn't scheduled to take more than five minutes. We have a second reading, 524, another second reading, 525, and then the last item, it's my understanding that that is being rescheduled.
Excellent. So, I believe that we need to read the item back. We need to read item 526, and, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Rubio to return it back to our office.
Item 526, authorize a competitive solicitation and price agreements for site work, erosion control, and planting on behalf of Portland Parks and Recreation for a amount not to exceed $8 million.
So, I would like to pull this back, and this item will be rescheduled to July 21, 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. So, it is done. So, it looks like we have three items that will carry over to the afternoon. I want to make sure Commissioner Maps has time for his item, and we don't want to rush that. So, fabulous colleagues, we are adjourned until 2:00 PM. Get some food, get outside, and I'll see you soon. Thank you, Kealan.
Thank you, Madam President.